Are we live? Good, great. Welcome to the February 26, 2019 Select Board Meeting at the Town of Camden. Before we start, just a word of logistics. As you all know, or should know, we have a new audio/video system that we're operating these days, and there were still some minor things to remind ourselves of, not the least of which, for all you who may come up and speak tonight, you have to kind of speak closer to the mic, please, kind of like what I'm doing right now. Last week, we had some people come up to the podium and step back, like I like to do in the chair, and we can lose audio, so please remember that. And no words from the audience, because people can't hear it anyway, so we don't allow that anyway. But anyhow, just some logistics. But with that, we'll start into our agenda for tonight, and the first item, as always, is our public input on non-agenda items. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to a non-agenda item? Okay, that was easy. We'll go right into then Select Board Reports. Taylor?
Yes, just one quick thing. Last week, we had sort of an organizational kickoff for the inland mooring group and identified sort of a mission statement for what we want to focus on in terms of moorings on Lake McGonagook, and I anticipate a second meeting coming up shortly, and I'm hoping to make some good progress.
I've been working a lot this week on a project that the Historic Resources Committee initiated. We've identified a lot of documents and archives in the town vault that are not digitized. This is like, this is an example here. This is all the Select Board minutes and everything the Town of Camden voted on from 1912 to 1925. And it's really, there's a lot of stuff in there that's actually helpful to the town in making decisions. Sometimes it's, I mean, it's not just about the enjoyment of knowing some of these things, but it can actually help us to know, you know, when somebody donated a piece of property, like the Village Green, for instance. Sometimes, like, so much time has passed that we lose the memory of the reason that person donated something, what their wishes were, and we end up relying on the memory that we all have for like, the last 20 years or something. And so, it really is important that we get all this stuff digitized, so that you can look at, you know, we have a record of all the Select Board meetings from the beginning of time, and it's just for it to sit in a vault somewhere and not be accessible, we end up having to just rehash a lot of things, I think. And so, we're sort of on a mission to get everything digitized. We have all of our annual reports got digitized up until 1920, or, excuse me, 1931, I think it was, and then that process stopped, and then we picked up again at like, 2008. So there's this whole huge block of time that none of this is digitized. So today, I digitized the annual report for 1932, so we're making a little bit of progress. We purchased a scanner that we're testing out to see if that will work. A lot of these documents are not allowed to leave the town office, so it kind of creates a problem for scanning them. But even just like this binder, this is 1960, and it's kind of funny, this, at February 1, 1960, at the Select Board Meeting, they voted not to plow the new hospital building this year. They closed Central Street, which is kind of fun, because we just did that, but they were doing it for winter sliding. They also committed somebody, they had doctors come and testify, and then committed somebody to an insane asylum. That was a Select Board job in 1960.
I thought you said it was a Select Board member.
And then they also voted to give a pistol permit out to somebody else. So, and then in this, I was reading that, you know, we've been dealing with Springbrook Hill and all the problems with Route 1. Back in 1915, the state had a bridge there over Springbrook, but a committee in Camden got together and said, instead of replacing it with another bridge, could you just put in a culvert instead? Which, I mean, shocking to me. Why, that's when we started blocking Fish Passage, we turned Route 1 into this kind of dam there, we're having all these problems. So anyway, a lot of interesting stuff, and that's what I remember now.
Great, thanks, Allison. Mark, would you like to add any Select Board report?
I have lots of things.
Oh, goodie.
I was a minute late because I was dragging so many things, actually. Been a busy week, busy couple weeks for meetings, I've been to the Conservation Commission, CAC Energy Commission, and tonight, I would normally be at the Opera House Committee Meeting, but it's going at the same time as we are today, although they're thinking about changing the day of the meeting, so we won't interfere.
Good idea.
And all of the committees, and also the Downtown Design Group, they're all very busy, working on a lot of different projects in the benefit of the town. So, you know, if you're not aware, there's a lot of committee work going on, a lot of people don't need a lot of good time to the town, and working very hard on it. I think Jeremy will talk a lot about Planning Board, which also, there's a lot of stuff that he's been involved with as well, both CAC and Planning Board, so a lot of interesting things.
Turn your mic on. Your mic.
Ah, the microphone.
You missed my intro on microphones, so.
Yeah, no, I looked at it and thought I could turn it off. A couple other things, Opera House events, again, great success going on with the Opera House. There is a mini Camden International Film Festival, little mini festival this weekend. They call it Cabin Fever, March 1st and 2nd at the Opera House. They call it a microfilm fest, so if you have a chance, you want to look it up, there are some really nice film events going on all for the next couple of days at the Opera House, a little mini SIF thing. And then there's a band coming next week from South Carolina called Ranky Tanky, who are just extraordinary. They do an unusual kind of southern kind of music called gullah, and I recommend anybody checking them out if you have a chance, that'll be next Wednesday. And then lastly, I haven't talked about it much yet, but Matt Brown, who used to own Manny's, the CD store in town, very involved musically, has been working really hard on a new festival for Camden, which will hopefully be a bookend for SIF, and it's called Jazz in June. It's a jazz festival in the month of June. It'll be June 14 through the 16th. There'll be events at the Opera House, at different restaurants, at the Snow Bowl, a really good thing for the town. It started as a conversation about what could we do to bring people into town a little earlier than the key vacation time. And the lineups and the groups and the artists being involved is extraordinary. There is a website, I think you'd go to jazzinjune dot, or just look for Jazz in June Camden, there's a Facebook page and a website, it's going to be another great event, hopefully an annual event that will happen in this town. That's it.
Thanks so much. We're going to, on the third item, the approval of board members, we're going to table that for now, because they're not in the packet, and we'll get to them next time. Four is, we have a consent agenda for two items. One is for the new victor and lodging license for the new owners of the Blue Harbor House at 67 Elm Street. And the second item is to appoint two members, Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Toudman, I believe his name is pronounced, to the Inland Harbor Mooring Ordinance Working Group. Do I hear any objections to the consent agenda, two items?
No objections, but one note, one of the applicants also had clicked off Pathways Committee as well.
Yeah, we're only addressing tonight the inland working.
Okay, just curious about that.
Look, that's flawless, isn't it? Pathway is flawless.
I think it is too, yeah, I think so. But hearing no objections, those two items are hereby adopted. The fifth item in the agenda is the discussion on the emergency medical services discussion. Before we start, I just want to preface with a few comments for everybody to be on the, understand completely where we're going, or not going, but what we're doing, because of, I've heard a lot of discussion about, in the media and other places, about this discussion. Clearly, you know, everybody should be clear that as elected officials and town manager, our responsibility is to turn over every rock that exists in any topic that we have to address for the benefit of the voters and residents of the Town of Camden. This generates discussions and evaluations. This is, I've heard the term used of considering, well, that's a little, that's going to be the next step, but evaluation is what we're into right now, this level. And besides, the second item is, this initiative discussion really, really factors on more than just Camden, it's multiple town issue, so we have to keep that in mind. And lastly, I want to point out, this very emphatically, that this is not related to an issue with our current supplier, Northeast Ambulance. There, there's been no complaints, no problems there, and I want Northeast to understand that. So with that preface, let's start the discussion. What about the emergency services? Audrey, would you like to lead it?
Yes, and I'll just do a quick introduction before I turn it over to our Fire Chief, Chris Farley. So, there've been some informal discussions going on between Chief Farley, City Manager Tom Luttrell of Rockland, and Fire Chief Chris Wytok of the City of Rockland, just about what this could look like, and really, it's more, it's just investigatory at this stage, it's just been discussion, and we thought this was a good opportunity to start talking about it publicly and just get an idea of what everybody's reaction was to even the idea of it. So that's the background for all of this, and Chief Farley can talk a little bit more about, you know, what we're thinking in terms of Camden's perspective on this, before we invite our friends from Rockland up to talk about their side of it.
Certainly. Chief?
So, good evening. For those of you who don't know, usually when I come to the meetings, I stand in the back and want to get out very quickly. You'll notice I'm sitting up front, that's an indication that I think this is a pretty exciting topic to talk about. I've got a quick question for Allison. In that book there that you mentioned, as a span of years, I think it was to 1925, did you come across anything that's talked about Fire Chief Alan Payson?
I did, actually, right as I was flipping through, I kept seeing Payson, Payson, and I was thinking, oh, maybe I'll find something really interesting I could talk about, but that name definitely appeared all throughout.
So when I've talked with Barbara.
Chris, can you point the microphone up a little bit?
When I've talked with Barbara Dyer, and she's given me history of the Camden Fire Department, she indicated to me that Chief Payson actually built and started the first ambulance at the fire department. So having a fire department provide ambulance service is not a foreign concept to the Town of Camden. That fire, that ambulance service that started at the fire department eventually transitioned into Camden First Aid, which served the town for many years. When this topic of, would the fire department be interested in doing, providing ambulance service came up, that was something that, again, created some excitement, both in myself and I think within the group of people that are standing or sitting behind me. I have started off my fire service career in a fire department that was, that provided ambulance service. I've been on many ambulance calls in an area very similar to this, so very familiar with that. When we started talking about providing ambulance service, what appealed to me about doing it was that it would be a collaborative effort with several different communities. Hopefully, we can get some of our neighbors involved, and certainly, the City of Rockland would be a good partner to work with, and seeing if this is something that we wanted to pursue.
Great, great, thanks, Chief. Do we want to have anybody talk, and we can ask questions, or?
I think it's probably a good opportunity to have Tom Luttrell and Chris Wytok come up and.
I would agree.
I definitely encourage also everyone to read your letter, Chris, that was in our packet, that was very helpful and a good, a good resource for everyone. Thank you for doing that.
We have a couple distinguished guests to talk, help us talk to this topic from Rockland, the Chief of Fire, Chris Wytok, and Rockland City Manager, Tom Luttrell. Would you guys come forward, please?
Do they need another microphone?
Yeah, that would be a good idea, thank you. We're going to plug up two microphones up there, just in case.
Can you talk at the same time?
Welcome, gentlemen.
We do that.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. The City of Rockland is excited to be starting the discussions with Camden and the other three towns on regionalization of EMS services and anything else down the road. We've been talking about regionalization for a while, past couple of years. Audra came to us recently and started talking about EMS regionalization and how we can all work together and possibly do, you know, do services together. I'll turn it over to the Chief now to explain the logistics on how this will all happen, though.
Thank you.
Next, Tom.
Thanks for having us, again. I don't know about distinguished guests, but we appreciate it anyway, so. So, yeah, like Tom said, you know, we started talking, I don't know, six, eight months ago, just informal, and then we've kind of led to where we are tonight. I think, just to give people that don't know, Rockland, a little perspective, you know, we have 18 full-time fire and EMS personnel. We operate on a 24, 48-hour shift, so somebody's always in the station, ready to answer calls. We're all cross-trained, fire and EMS, except for two of us who are just EMS-only, we find, and many municipalities find, that's the biggest bang for your buck, is to have cross-trained personnel in the station. So typically, when, you know, when a call comes in, whoever's in the station can answer that call, whatever it be. So, again, there's 18 of us, last year, we did just over 2,000 runs, you know, we're very proactive in the community. We tend to be some of the more highly trained, highly skilled people in our workforce, and we take pride in that. That's something that if you ask, you know, the local hospital, if you ask the community members, you know, people are pretty happy and pretty satisfied with the service we provide. And in doing that, it was just kind of a natural, natural kind of fit, that when we started talking regionalization, that Chief Farley and Audra came and started posing the question, what could, what could the city offer? We started talking about Camden, and then we just kind of developed into the four towns that are covered. So, you know, we're trying to look at different models to make all of this work, is, it's taken a lot of time, put a lot of effort into it. We wanted to do something that, again, could help the four towns, but also wouldn't affect our staffing in the city. That's important to the both of us, that whatever we provide, the services in the city aren't neglected or delayed in any way. And we kind of came up with a, I think, staffing-wise, a pretty good fit. It definitely, money-wise, is going to be more expensive. We're not, you know, we're not looking to give an option that in two or three years isn't going to work. We want staffing that's going to, that's going to make this effective, you know, 20 years down the road. I think the, a benefit for the city to provide the coverage, one of many, is obviously, we're a municipality, we're funded with a municipal budget, we take what revenue we can get, and the rest is subsidized by taxes, so that allows us to put patient care first. We're not worried about a bottom line. There are obviously private companies out there, if they're not making money, they're losing money, and they're going to go out of business. And where we have the benefit to be able to, you know, mold or combine revenue with a tax base, I think that gives us a leg up, if you will, on cost. And keeping costs fairly consistent, you know, like I said, we're still working on numbers and everything, but it's, it is going to be more expensive right up front, I think that's fairly obvious, but like I said, we, our service is second to none, gladly say that, you know, the men and women at 118 Park Street are the best, and we'll continue to provide that if we expand forward, so.
Chief, are you currently servicing other communities? Are you currently servicing other communities besides Rockland?
Yeah, so right now, we have a contract with Owl's Head, and that, you know, that's fairly easily covered with the staff that we have now, obviously. I mean, that was kind of built in, I think, maybe 10 years ago. Yeah, we started that, that process, and it was, it was an easy fit. Obviously, being right next door, a smaller community, we were able to absorb that fairly well. We also do a lot of mutual aid with the surrounding towns, whether it be, you know, a paramedic or a full ambulance, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Let these two get away their own questions.
I mean, I have all kinds of questions, but I don't want, I don't want to interrupt the presentation to, maybe they'll be answered on their own later.
I was just going to elaborate a little bit on what the Chief was saying about, you know, how Rockland subsidizes it through taxes, and we would be setting this up as a off-revenue, special revenue account, where all the revenue from these runs would be going into a special revenue account, the expenses would be coming out. So anything that's left over at the end of the year would be going into a reserve for this EMS service, which would help offset costs down the road for equipment or whatever, so. It wouldn't be going back into the Rockland City coffers, is what I wanted to get across.
Thanks for that, thank you, that's good to know. I kind of assumed that, but anyway, that's good, good. But we have these two gentlemen, any questions?
Yeah, I, several questions, obviously, but I guess the best place to start is sort of talking about the, I'm curious about just making it clear what the differences in the level of service provided, between sort of what we have, what our contract is now with our private service, and how you guys operate in terms of paramedic-level staffing, and the mutual aid that you guys experience now throughout the county, and how you think that might differ with the plan that you guys have initially drawn up.
Sure. I'll be honest with you, I'm not too familiar with the contract you have now.
Yeah.
But what I can say is, I know Northeast, you know, they do transfers, obviously, I mean, that's where they make a majority of their money, and good for them, I mean, there's a lot of money sitting in there.
Inter-facility transfer.
Inter-facility transfers, so hospital to hospital, nursing home to hospital, what have you. You know, we don't do that, so our focus is true 911 response, so, and that's not going to change. I don't, we don't have any plans to get into transfer services, so the trucks that we have right now in Rockland, and if this moves forward, the trucks that we put in other towns will be strictly 911 calls, so there won't be a truck out on a transfer, it'll be on an emergency run in the station waiting for one, so.
Allison?
So, I guess, you know, I'm not nearly as informed as some of my partners here in this general area, but I guess that's probably similar to a lot of people in the community. So tell me if I say, if I'm wrong, I guess, about, I mean, to me, the idea is appealing, if for no other reason than it seems like we got lure, you know, we had Camden First Aid, and then we saw this, that started to get expensive, and we said, oh, wow, there's this opportunity that is just so much cheaper, what a great deal, let's jump on that. And then, we put ourselves in a position where that, you know, that eliminated the competition, basically, so Northeast was able to go for such a low price that it drove the competition out of business, and then, now we're left with, as that price starts to go up, we really have very few options. And luckily, you know, now it looks like we can talk about working with you, but it seems like, it's almost like a price gouging situation where we put ourselves in a, we're helping to build a monopoly that we then have no control over with sort of the corporate arrangement.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, costs for us, any increases, I think, would, you know, outside of any, anything that I really can't think of right now, would be related to, you know, employee benefits, you know, percentage raises that get negotiated through a union contract. I can't foresee any reason, coming back to towns that we provide coverage and say, hey, we need, you know, we need a 200% increase, 500, you know, 300% increase. It's, I think, another benefit.
And that's what I like about the, the idea of working with municipality, that we could be partners with you and not just a revenue opportunity, I think is.
We're not looking at this as a revenue opportunity, nor are you folks. It's more the level of service and having just 911 calls. But it's also, like the Chief was saying, it would be budgetary, we'd have to sit down and do a budget every year, even with you folks, to get your approval, and you'd have to take into consideration the City of Rockland's union contracts, and, you know, what the wage increase and the salary and the, you know, health benefits and everything else, so that all have to be incorporated. But that would really be the only increase in cost, besides, you know, whatever medical supplies you would need.
So are we just looking at contracting with you for ambulance service, or are we looking at more of a combining of resources in some way where, you know, are some of our firefighters might get trained with some additional EMS skills, or what's?
I mean, we, so, again, when we started looking at this, we just started looking EMS. I mean, we, so, again, when we started looking at this, we just started looking EMS, and then we kind of broadened it out to, you know, if we can, if we can put staff on these ambulances that are also fire-trained, that obviously, in, in the day and age that we're in, and the news articles and everything that are coming out with, you know, low volunteerism and, and, and staff shortages, that, you know, this is a way to have two extra cross-trained people ready to go on any call. And, and that allows us as, as, as fire department agencies to, to kind of mold our response plans to all look the same, you know, and, and we do a lot of that now. You know, I, I was actually just thinking, if, if a fire, if somebody's pager went off right now, you'd lose, you'd lose half, you know, half the building to, you know, for heading out on fire trucks, you know, if, this weekend, we had a fire in Rockland or reported one, and pretty much everybody that you see here was helping us out. So, we're already doing it. We're already looking at ways to, you know, to save costs, even, you know, when we talk regionalization, regionalization saves money when, when both entities have something of equal value that they can give up, you know, whether it be staff, trucks, and, and all that, and, and that, that isn't what's going on here as far, you know, nobody really has anything to give up, because we're always operating at a minimum, but this is allowing us to, to kind of build up, if you will, our resources together, and, and, and move forward that way, and, you know, I mean, who knows, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, what that'll turn into, but I think this is just a, a smart way to, to get the resources and the equipment that, that have to be there, so.
Thank you.
I, I think to Bob's point at the beginning, is that, we're not, we're not reacting to an issue, but I think we're trying to get ahead of the curve and create some solutions, and I think the best way that we can create solutions is, is collaboratively. I think you see Chief Peaslee in the back of the room from Rockport. You know, we're going to, we're going to come up with the solutions together, and, and this is, this is a first step. I think Chief White Talk just said that. Providing ambulance is a first step towards doing a whole lot more things cooperatively.
Yeah, sure.
Mark?
Okay. I've got a lot to say, I want to give a little background first, people have heard it before. I spent twenty years with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department as an EMT, doing search and rescue services, a special EMT unit there. I'm also the chair of the four-town EMS committee here, and helped negotiate the, the last contract with Northeast Ambulance. And the first thing I want to say, it's, it's, it's not really fair to compare this as a, a, a public versus private company situation. I have yet to ever meet any EMT, any paramedic, on any ambulance, whether it be private or professional, that wasn't giving a hundred percent for the job, doing the best they could for the patient. Anybody that gets into the business is, is thinking that way. So this is not about, you know, we're going to get a, a different service. Northeast has done a, a really good job. It's a very difficult job right now in, in, for law enforcement, for fire, finding people to work the jobs, for whatever reason. It's especially difficult in towns where we used to depend so much on volunteer people, and those people aren't available anymore, simply because life is more difficult and more complex than it used to be, and people don't have the time to, to donate. So, trying to make the best of small resources and work them together, I think, is, is very important. What you get here, I think they're talking about, is the beginning of a regional service, where they work to, work together better, can provide better service, because we have more resources that are working together. I think the, the real key also is the difficulty for the, the private companies is, is staffing, and they transfer people around, and, and, you know, people move, and it's a difficult situation. Our thesis has done a great job of, of keeping staffing here and taking care of stuff. But if we have municipal services, then we have people that are working for the town and live in the town, or live nearby, and are invested in the town. It's almost more career versus job. A tough way to put it, but you get the people that are really committed to the community, and that's important. It will be more expensive, but in the long run, I think, long-term, it'll provide a blueprint for moving forward, combining services, like Chris said. If you want to look on the internet, W A B I and Bangor just did a two-part series about how a lot of towns around Maine are having difficulty attracting people to work as volunteer firefighters, even to get them full-time, and the troubles they're having in the service. And this is a way to sort of head that off, and I think that's real important to know. So you might want to go look at those stories, because it really lays it out, and this is the future, in terms of, I, I look at the board, I look at what we're doing up here, and no matter if we're talking about, we can be talking about plowing streets and fixing potholes and doing all the things that we do for a town, but I always think the number one most important thing we do is the safety of our citizens, providing, you know, services, fire and police services, so that our citizens feel safe and can depend on us when they need us, I think is more important than anything else we do. And I think this is how we move forward.
Smart. You want to make one more comment before we, so we have to move to other people who want to talk to?
Of course. Just similar to Mark, I also work in public safety during the day. I spent two years working in our 911 center here in Knox County, before I moved to a city where I'm a professional firefighter and EMT now, so it's, I think, similar to Mark, very near and dear to my heart, and, and knowing sort of what happens behind the scenes, and really think that it's important that we have the, the best service possible. And I, I think that a municipal service and regionalization is somewhat of what we're talking about now, particularly if it gives our fire departments the ability to work more closely together, and the mutual aid that we have now, I think is a, a significant benefit. And I had a, I have a couple of follow-up questions, but I think the one important thing in terms of, you know, there's a lot of talk about the ability to recruit and retain on-call and volunteer firefighters, which the majority of our, our county, the fire departments depend on, so I wonder if, if either, if you, particularly Chief Farley, if you see this as an opportunity to recruit new volunteers and retain them, if this is something that you feel like adds an additional benefit for you, if your, if EMS is being run through the fire department, so to speak.
So I guess an added value of, that you get from, I guess, this particular fire chief, is I often spend time looking for housing for some of our call firefighters, or jobs for our call firefighters, to keep them in town. So, if we can do something that's going to help keep them here, absolutely, and I think this is, again, I think this is an exciting opportunity to do that.
Allison, do you have another question?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I just, first of all, I want to say, I'm very supportive of this. A lot of that just comes from, by a process of osmosis, I know that Mark and Taylor have really looked at this, and they are enthusiastic about it, and Chief Farley is enthusiastic about it, so I am too. But I also, I mean, I appreciate that we're saying that we're not reacting to an issue, that Northeast is wonderful, and we love Northeast, and I, I personally have had some wonderful experiences with them showing up at my house, at friends' houses, and having them be, be really great, so I would reinforce that too. But I wouldn't say that's the, the only thing that I've heard, you know, there have been, you know, issues sometimes, I think, where there isn't an ambulance that's available right away, or one of our firefighters, we are, we've been lucky several times that we have a firefighter that's available to be able to drive the ambulance, because they already have that training or something. I think there are a lot of times it seems like the fire department arrives at emergencies first, and, is that true? Before the ambulance?
I think that's fair to say.
Okay. I mean, I'm not saying it's good or bad, it's just a, it's just a fact, or there are times when somebody, you know, if somebody has an emergency on the side of the mountain, who's going to go there, and who's going to get there first, and who knows that mountain? I know that as, you know, just a regular citizen, thinking, okay, if I slip and fall or my kids get hurt on the side of the mountain, I'm, I'm guessing it's probably going to be the fire department that's going to end up coming there. And I guess, I think the average citizen has this expectation that maybe the, that person is really trained, has a high level of medical training as well, but what I understand is that's usually not the case with the way that we have things set up. And so to me, it just seems to make all the sense in the world to try to combine these skills as much as we can, and to offer, okay, if somebody is a volunteer firefighter, they have a career path, they can continue to get more education, and I think the community really can benefit from that. I don't think that's, if, if Camden wants to take risks anywhere, I don't think it's in this area of safety, so I'm just really appreciative that so many are willing to look at this.
Tell you one more, I want to get to a general, general, other people want to speak to this, I believe.
There's just, I, I just want to address one thing. In terms of, that, that I've seen, that I've seen in working in the 911 center, and that I've also heard, experienced through firefighters and first responders from different towns, is that a concern that has come up with our current system is, as Allison alluded to, the availability of ambulances. You know, Northeast, Northeast ambulance obviously has a bottom line to meet, and that part of, when they're not providing 911 services, they are frequently doing inter-facility transfers, so from Penn Bay to Portland, or beyond, where someone needs to be transported by ambulance. I believe, and I'm sure I'll be correct if I'm not correct, that generally, there are three ambulances staffed during the day and two at night, and that means if there's one or two ambulances that are not in town and on long-distance transfers, that can leave us shorthanded if there's more than one 911 call in all four towns. To me, that is, is risky. And, you know, I've heard anecdotes given to me where, because the nearest mutual aid partner that's licensed with proper personnel, if should that happen, is the city of Rockland. And I've heard several anecdotes about 911 calls happening in Camden, and Hope, and in Lincolnville, where a rig from Northeast isn't available, and it invariably ends up being Rockland Fire and EMS that provides mutual aid anyway.
I see Rockland ambulances go by my house sometimes with their lights on, so I know already, you must be helping us a little bit, right?
Is anybody in the audience, other than us, that would like to speak to this issue? Young lady?
Yes.
Please come up. Otherwise, we won't be able to hear you if you don't speak into a mic.
And Chris, I think I found, I think I found, this is a, this was from 1939, in front of M E T.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that was a new vis, between you two, Bart.
Yes, this is the model of what we're trying to roll out here.
I think I rode on that one.
And that's a lovely M E T in the background there, too.
For those of you who don't know, don't know me, I am Julia Libby, and I spent thirty years on Camden First Aid.
Wow.
And the last two years of it, I was the service chief.
Oh wow.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. And I have a vested interest in this. I think you've all said it correctly, that the safety for the citizens is most important. You need to listen to these individuals, because they have put a lot of thought into this, a lot of work into this, and there's a reason they're doing it. Not because Northeast doesn't do their job, but they're not available all the time. They're an inter-facility transfer business, that's their bottom line, I don't fault them for that. That's why they came to Camden, to take over our transfers, because we used to do seventy-five to eighty percent of the transfers out of there. That's what they wanted to do. Their EMTs and their paramedics love to do emergencies, but that's not what they do most of the time. So these guys do emergencies, they practice it, they train for it. I'm not saying that they don't train all the time, but I've been told that there's little, not as much training as we used to do. We used to train all the time, we had training every month, we used to go over calls all the time, so you could, new people would know what to do. There's a, there's also an intuition. You get out there, you can do it by rote, but you need that little intuition, you need that sixth sense, you need to be a street medic, to do it and do it correctly. I'm not saying that they don't, okay? There's a history, they need to be invested in the community. You need people that live in the community, you're treating your neighbors, you're caring for your relatives, you're caring for your friends, your coworkers, there's a difference if you live in the communities, of how you treat your people. I'm not saying that they don't do, but this does make a difference, there's a connection. I find that very important. I was told, six years ago, that all ambulances are the same. Well, it depends on the licensure level, after what you have for equipment on there. The state mandates a certain amount of equipment, and then, whatever license level you are, you, you add to it. I was also told, a paramedic is a paramedic. Yeah, you get all, they get the same training, but how they use it in the field, and how much they practice it, and how much they train, makes all the difference in the whole wide world. So, no, I want you to think about, each one of you think about, if you're going to have knee surgery, do you want a general practitioner doing it? Do you want an orthopedic surgeon doing it? Do you want someone that's been doing it for a long time? Point to think about. Any type of public service, EMS, fire, or police, is expensive. It is. These people need to make a living, they can't do it for eight dollars an hour. There's no more volunteers. When I started, it was basically volunteers. Well, did it. And I have to say, for these people here, Lincolnville lost a lot, because they lost all their first responders when Northeast took over. I was one of the first responders. So, that made a big difference, when Rockland was going to come, or even Camden First Aid was coming, because a first responder got there, started treatment, maybe you were there ten minutes long before the ambulance got there, does make a difference. Am I correct? And according to a past light board person, he said they saved a million dollars by having Northeast. I say, you didn't save it, you deferred it. Now you're going to, now you're going to pay for it, what you should have had in the first place, you gave it away. So, that's all I can say, but I support these people.
Thank you, Ms. Libby, and thanks for your three decades of service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I saw some other hands up. How about the new state representative, the Honorable Vicky Duderah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members, and Town Manager Kayla Rottbell. Vicky Duderah, I live on Trim Street in Camden. Despite coming straight from work, I'm here as a private citizen, not in my new job capacity. I'm really happy to follow Julia, because I was a member of Camden First Aid, and did that for many years. And how it happened, I was, you know, my husband ripped something out of the paper, said, hey, you're, you know, you're looking for something to do, why don't you do this? I took the first responder class, next thing I know, I'm signed up for Camden First Aid, going out on the calls Wednesday nights, getting the pay, getting the radio, and going out every other weekend. And I have to say, that doing that, it, it wrapped me into this town in a way that I think just sort of set me on a course to want to really do more for the town. There was just something about that, and I think that Julia captured it really well, that you were helping, helping your neighbors and your friends at such a vulnerable, vulnerable time. I don't know that it, that doing this might not increase volunteerism in another way, because for me, I did it for a few years, I then became a mom, it was great training as a mother to know what's really truly an emergency and what's not, and I just want to sort of give another perspective, that, you know, I think perhaps this could be a tool to increase volunteerism in the town, so.
Thank you very much. I saw one other hand, and I think it was Mr. French. Or should I say, the Honorable John French? The Honorable John French, no.
Concerned citizen. First, I'll start off with, I have preached for years, consolidation, work together. I think that's the first step, but this is also becoming a Northeast bashing thing here, too. I was in on the very first contract, and I was here when First Aid met its demise, I saw the whole thing that happened. We went through the R P's when we originally did it, we had three companies that bid on them, Northeast, First, Camden First Aid, and Delta. Delta had come in at five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, Camden First Aid was four-hundred-and-fifty. So, I mean, it's very expensive, has been very expensive. If I recall the negotiations when it started, Northeast, and forgive me if I'm wrong, was hanging their hat on what they call community, uh, community, what they call paramedicine, and they was hoping that'd be a revenue source to help them go through this. Last time, that didn't go. go, whatever happened. But still, and I'm kind of thinking too much here, you know, because I'm, some of this stuff is kind of teed me off tonight, it's been said, because these people do great work, and I think we're getting a contract that we negotiated. We have kept trying to keep the price down, we're now at three hundred, almost four, for the four communities, which is nothing for what it costs. Every one of these gentlemen here will sit here and tell you what it costs to buy a rig, what it costs to man it, and all of that, person in it. So, I mean, they've done a good job, and they've done what we've asked of them. They've also, if I recall, they offered us a 911 truck, but it was like six hundred thousand dollars, which is probably really a true number for doing that. So, I mean, we weren't willing to go down that route. We started off with ten to fifteen thousand dollars from Camden First Aid, and then it slowly came up. Now it's at one fifty this year in the budget, if I recall, if I just saw that. So, I mean, they've done a good job, these folks do a great job. I mean, I'm not downplaying anybody, but I don't want to see us create a million-dollar monster either. I think we need to go slow, we need to talk about this, make sure we do the right thing, make sure that we, everybody understands where we're going, what we're going to do, because we're now going to be in the ambulance business. We're going to be buying, I understand, two trucks, additional trucks to carry the, the extra thing. You're going to have, starting to figure it out today, population of what, Rockland's what, eight, nine?
Seventy-five.
And then you've got Camden at five, and Rockwood at four.
It's about twenty, about twenty thousand.
So you've got a fairly decent population base, you'd be covering with five ambulances. And there's going to be times, those five ambulances will be busy. So you never can be prepared, you can have a hundred of them, you know what I mean. So, let's do this right, do it slow, do it in the right way, get everybody involved, everybody on the same page. If we're going to go down this road, I think we've got a very good opportunity to do a lot more. And we have for years, Rockwood, Camden, and Rockland, actually all the towns, we've worked together, mutual aids, all the different things that went on. So, it's a great opportunity to go forward, but let's also not throw away this, as Leonard used to say, the baby with the bathwater. You know, because we still need to negotiate another contract with Northeast.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think, you know, I think we need to tell them what we want for service, and they need to, Butch needs to come up and say, okay, this is what it's going to be, and this is what it's going to cost. You know, they're good people, just let them do what they've got to do. I probably ran my mouth too much, but anyway.
No, 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 no. Thank you, John, very much. Is, before I go back to the select board, is anybody else in the audience, any of our fire people would like to speak to something here? Okay, come on up. I didn't see your hand before, so I'm sorry.
I'm a little unprepared, but I'll do my best. I have a little bit of an insight, and I-
Could you introduce yourself first, please?
I'm Jared Lindsay, I'm a former Camden firefighter, and I still work as a professional firefighter.
Thank you, Jared.
Kind of add a little bit of insight with Northeast, and I would agree, I don't think it should be a Northeast bashing session. I think there's a lot of questions that still should be answered, as in exactly how the Fire and EMS is going to work together. You're going to have four chiefs essentially, sort of trying to all do the same thing. And there's still a lot of numbers out there that have not quite been answered, as far as how many calls, what exactly the cost would be. I think it's definitely a good thing. I certainly would agree that you could have a hundred ambulances, and sometimes it's not enough. So there's that big question of if Northeast is going to be sort of forced out of the area, who's going to do the transfers? Is it a revenue source for the municipalities, which a lot of people do, hire back firefighters, so people make more money, and somebody still needs to take the massive heart attack patient down to Portland. So there's a lot of questions that are not necessarily being answered here, and I don't have the answers to. I have a lot of faith, I'm fortunate, and I've, actually from San Diego, so I understand LA County, and we're sort of dipping our toe into that county response, which is sort of, in my opinion, that's the solution, because some departments have four firefighters, some have twenty. The only real solution is for everybody to work together to provide the best service. So before these numbers all get thrown out, I mean, these guys have the answers, I'm not. But there's certainly some more questions that I think should probably be answered.
Thank you, Jared, thank you very much. Anybody else, I saw another hand back there, I saw, yeah, that's the hand I saw.
It's Butch's hand, Butch head of Northeast.
So, Butch Russell, CEO of Northeast Mobile Health, and I just want to, and hopefully don't turn into a bashing while I'm at the stage here, but I just want to, and one of the things that we really haven't talked about tonight is price. And I, I just want to make it clear, it's been, it's been made very clear, it's going to be more expensive. You know, back to the history that John brought up, we, you know, Northeast, when we first moved into the area, we were actually reached out to by Penn Bay, so Penn Bay Medical Center actually reached out to us many, many years ago when we first moved in. And so Penn Bay Hospital said, we're not being serviced how we need to be serviced, we need help, will you come in and help? We took some time and really looked at that, said, sure, we think we can make it work. At the original kind of onset of that, there were kind of three ambulance services that were splitting that call volume. We had one twenty-four-hour truck, I think actually in the very beginning, we ran it sixteen hours, and then those folks were called back in after, late at night if we needed them. So, you know, we were asked to come into the community. We, when Camden First Aid went through, went through their problems, the towns all reached out to us, and, or with the RFP, we responded to the RFP. I will say right up front, I had nothing to do with the pricing in the beginning, I will agree that it was very underpriced. I'm not sure what the CEO at the time, you know, was really looking at, where he was going to make up that difference. But over the years, we kind of looked, you know, even the last three-year contract that we renewed, I went to the town and we threw out some, some fairly big numbers, and we negotiated that down to the, at the third year, what was it, around eighty thousand, or now, I forget where it ended up. And then the last year, basically did the same thing, where we went into the one-year contract, and it's just really showing the numbers. And there's, to run an ambulance service is a huge expense, you guys are very aware of that behind me. You know, it's just the quick math of what we're looking at to put on two new ambulances for this service, to cover the 911, and it's just, just do it on your calculator or your phone really quick. It's twenty dollars an hour. We use a factor, and I'm not sure what, what these guys experienced, we use a factor of 1.3 for taxes and benefits. So that gets you a twenty-six something dollars an hour, times twenty-four hours, times three hundred sixty-five days a year, times two, that gets you to about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars just for payroll for, for one truck. Now you double that to two, you're over, you're at five hundred thousand dollars just, I'm sorry, for one, then you double that for two people on the truck. That's five hundred thousand dollars just for payroll and taxes and benefits for one truck. Now you're doubling that to, you know, over a million dollars. That's just for personnel, that doesn't include overtime. We factor in ten percent for overtime. I would be willing to bet that probably the fire department experiences more overtime than we do. The fire department doesn't have PDMs, we hire PDMs to fill the vacations and the sick time and the openings, we try to put PDMs in there so we're not experiencing overtime. Many fire departments will, that's all overtime. So anyone goes on vacation, it's backfilled with someone else on overtime. And I'm not, I don't know the details of this, there may be a different plan. So, just telling you the, how other fire departments do, larger fire departments. There's also callback, so forced time, someone doesn't show up, or calls out sick, someone's forced in, and that's usually double time. So, you know, just the straight time, you're looking at somewhere between nine hundred and a million dollars just to pay for tax, just to pay for the salaries and benefits, plus the trucks, plus the equipment. I'm putting this somewhere, you know, my rough guess, 1.1 to 1.2 million dollars a year. The revenue side of things is only four hundred thousand dollars. That's all Northeast brings in currently on this, on the four-town contract, is about four hundred thousand dollars. So you take the four hundred thousand dollars off from that, leaves you with about eight hundred thousand dollars that you're going to be looking at for covering with taxes. We're currently charging three hundred thousand.
Thank you, well, thank you, Butch. I want to, I want to get, no, I want to stop for a minute. I want, I want to thank you first of all, and thank Northeast for all its great services. I said when we came in to this, this issue, this is not anything to do with the service you provide. Thank you, thank you for that. And clearly, clearly, there's a lot of work that has to be done going forward with this. This is a discussion about, you know, as a select board, our responsibility is to make sure we evaluate where the ship is going, or it should be going. And that's what I, again, prefaced my statement about, and we, and we have a long way to go. So, I just, unless there's anybody else who wants to speak to it, what I, what I believe is, we don't need to vote on anything here. Basically, we're going to continue.
Yeah, I guess, to give a little bit of a backdrop, I didn't want to continue down this road with Chief Farley, and White Hawk, and Manager Tom Luttrell, until we had a public discussion about it, because, you know, I want Northeast to know about it, and have the opportunity to come and, you know, speak about what they do. And I just didn't want to go down this road too far without having this conversation with the select board. So this is really about, and, you know, there are a lot of questions asked about specifics around, oh, are you going to do, like, what are the numbers, are you going to do transport? I don't think this is the time to talk about it at this meeting. That discussion needs to be had, but first, we needed to have this conversation publicly, and find out if this was even something-
Here it is.
Any of you were willing to entertain, was there anybody in the community who was-
Right.
-adamantly against the idea, adamantly in support of the idea? We need to hear those perspectives before we even start that more detailed conversation about where we go with this.
Right.
So, you know, that was really the intent of tonight, it wasn't to try and make a decision about where we're going next.
Well, I started, I've been talking about the term about contemplating versus evaluating, where I've heard no, I'm not going to speak for each of you, you can speak for yourselves, but I've heard no objection from any of the four of us in saying we should not investigate this and go forward with you looking into it. There's a lot of homework that has to be done here. We're very far from discussing numbers, we're very far from discussing the pros and cons. We just think, you know, way, way back when, when we started together with select board with you, we said one of our objectives was to continue to think regionally and act locally. And to do that, you have to, you have to evaluate regional, you have to evaluate local. Not making any decisions, and really don't want to get into numbers, we're not prepared for that tonight. But unless any of the select board members disagree with what I just said, I believe that we would want to continue to investigate and put more flesh on the bone of this potential. We're going to do that with many other issues that the public hasn't even seen yet, and will, in other areas of our town. And that's, this is a great idea to, and thank the gentleman from, the distinguished gentleman from, from Rockland, and the distinguished gentleman from Northeast. Thank you for your service, Butch, it's been appreciated. There's no, I've seen no, heard no complaints about it, as I said earlier on. So if, unless there's any other comments about-
I have a question.
All right, go ahead.
Joe, a question. Obviously, you do two businesses here, you do 911, and you do transfers. And, you know, obviously, we will still need transfer business in this region if we take over 911. Would that work for you? Will you, do you continue to do the transfer business as well?
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that. That's something that's going to have to be worked out, is we figure out where this is going. And if I can make one more comment, because it's been mentioned several times, that, you know, the transfers are, again, I've made them, made this comment several times going through the, you know, last negotiation, but the transfer work makes it cheaper for you guys. And, you know, it keeps getting mentioned that we're doing transfers instead of being available for emergencies. I think we've only called you guys since the, since the beginning of the last contract, less than six times. I, is that, I mean, and-
Yeah, I don't want to go down that road, because it sounds like we're talking to about, the term I've heard, bashing, that's not going to go on here. That, that, there's been no complaints from the public, that I've heard at least, or the town has heard that I'm aware of.
You know, and I would say it's, it's, this is very much a conversation about the level of service we want as a community.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's surely what it is. And absolutely, that level of service needs to be weighed with cost. And this is the whole point of having this discussion, is we need to start thinking about this, and if we, you know, kind of don't have this initial conversation, we're never going to move past where we're at now.
Correct.
Make something really-
One quick-
Yes, I want to be clear about something. From my perspective, comparing the level of service, you know, isn't Northeast bashing. I've worked very close, side by side with a lot of the paramedics and EMTs that work for you, Butch. To me, personally, it's, we're talking about apples and oranges, and comparing the services is important. I realize that some people might look at that and, and not think it's fair, but I, I think that that's important. I think there, I know there are really dedicated, well-trained people that work for Northeast, who I have a great deal of respect for. For me, as Audra just pointed out, it's about the level of service, and if there's a comparison to be had, then I think that it's an obligation for me to do that. And that's, that's just where I stand.
Thank you.
One more thing, real quick. I just want to say, since the last contract, the level of service and the working with Northeast has gotten better, has improved since it was before. I mean, Joe, who's back there somewhere, who's a regional thing, has been a great asset, the best asset we've had as a, as a contact with Northeast since the contract first started, I believe. So, it's the best it's ever been.
Thanks for saying that, Mark. And I want to, I want to thank Chris, and Tom, and Butch, especially for coming tonight. Again, reemphasizing and reemphasizing, this is a, we are responsible to look at all options for the town. We haven't got any numbers in front of us, we have no logistics, there's going to be a lot of work. Safety is a huge issue, you can't put numbers against safety, it's a very difficult thing to do for the public. But I think we clearly feel that we should continue to evaluate this rock and turn it over, and that's going to take some time. So thank you all very much. With that, with that, I want to move on to the sixth and seventh items on the agenda, which is, which are actually two public hearings, one for a victual license, and the other for a potential ordinance amendment to go to-
Give them a chance to clear the room.
We'll give a chance for our fire department to go back to work. Or not, hopefully not.
Is it pretty impressive I pulled this up? This is like the first thing, I was very proud of myself. This is from one of my other digitization projects. This is from, that's from the very first winter carnival thing for the snowball, 1939.
Think of the sad, it was, because there's a committee, there's a meeting upstairs-
Let's pull up a picture of Norm Baker here.
All I can think of is that maybe it was the press committee bleeding through somehow, from the tuck room. They're in the tuck room.
Spring break.
Tuck room through the vents or something, I-
That's, I was just curious, because you saw, you knew what was going on, I didn't, noise upstairs, I didn't know.
I know, I was trying to figure this out, but-
All right, back, get back into our agenda again. I'm going to start, open a public hearing, and I'm going to read a procedure for public hearings, as we always do before any public hearing occurs. Basically, the purpose of public hearing is for the public to express their opinions, and for the board to gain a greater understanding of whatever the issue may be before us. We do ask, anybody that wants to speak, please do so, but come to the microphone, state your name, and blah, blah, blah. But also, remember, the meeting is being televised, recorded, and minutes are being taken of everything you say or do. Also, we want you to address all of your comments to me, the chair, so we can keep this organized. As a matter of courtesy, no verbal, no applause, verbal stuff needed, besides, nobody can hear it with our new system, so that's kind of a good thing. Lastly, or not lastly, but after everybody in the public has had an opportunity to speak to any of these issues, I will close the public discussion completely, and open it up to the select board, so we can discuss the issue amongst ourselves. There will be no more input from the public unless one of us has a question of any person who has said something earlier. Keep your comments brief and to the point. And with that, I would, we're going to talk about the first public hearing issue is for the Blue Harbor Inn at, Blue Harbor House Inn at 67 Elm Street for a Class V bed and breakfast license. Is there anybody here that wants to speak from the public, to, for, against, or in general about this, this license? Seeing none, I'm going to close the discussion to the public and open it to the select board. Does the select board have any persons, have any comments on the classified license?
Ready for a motion?
I am.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I just lost it here, we authorized the Blue Harbor Inn at 67, House Inn at 67 Elm Street for a Class V bed and breakfast license.
Second. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, four zero, Beth, thank you. The second public hearing is for evaluating a warrant to be proposed for the annual town meeting on June 11th, 2019. Does anybody from the public want to speak for, against, or about, just in general about this proposal for this ordinance? just in general about this proposal for this ordinance?
You wanna read what they are?
Yeah, let me read them, one second, Jenny. I should read them. The amendment, there are three portions of this ordinance amendment. One is amending Article III, Section II definitions by amending the definition of lodging, the category of hotel or motel to cross-reference the revision in Article VIII, Section 7B, Paren 12, proposed below, and amend Article VIII District Regulation, Section 7, Traditional Village District, Item B, permitted use, Paren 12, would allow restaurant food service to the general public in existing hotels as a special exemption proposed in Article VIII, Section 7, Item C, proposed below, and finally, amend Article VIII District Regulation, Section 7, Traditional Village District, Item C, users permitted as special exemptions by adding a new number 16, allowing restaurant food service to the general public in existing hotels as long as
How are you?
Good, how are you? Good.
Jenny Simon Camden. It's nice to be here, not about Route 1. Although this is sort of Route 1.
Hey, I'm Eric Simon.
Good to see you guys.
We've both lived in Camden going on 16 years now. And we're innkeepers at Birchwood for 15?
Lifers.
Yeah, we're close, we want to be lifers. And we just think this is a great proposal. We're excited to see the town put it forth. You know, that, in particular, the Noren Vega to us is so iconic and beautiful. And I know you've heard all about that, because I actually watched the streaming of the pre-
Ooh.
I'm good now.
Thank you.
But, you know
I have to subscribe.
And you know you're living in Maine in the winter when you're sitting on the couch knitting and streaming a town meeting. But anyway, you know, in summer, looking at the beautiful Whitehall, it's one of our favorite things, is to be able to sneak out, throw up the shingle. And we're also state park pass holders. We park at the park, and we take the beautiful sidewalk into town, and we go to dinner at the Whitehall. And it's so much fun. And to be able to access a chef of his caliber for a date night out as a resident is spectacular. And then to be able to tell tourists that, we just think it's a slam dunk, so.
So if I get this right, you're honoring your competitors.
Absolutely.
Which is really admirable.
If they are strong, we are strong.
I agree.
And the town is strong. So it just makes the whole place a more vibrant, dynamic place to be. And I totally understand what it's like to be a nervous neighbor. And I think it's good to have this forum, so people can voice their concerns. And I hope their concerns are alleviated by the fact that it's an iconic property, this is an iconic property. The innkeepers and the chef are stellar. And I don't see how it actually will change a day-to-day experience, living on the street, being in our town, being a neighbor, because they're already servicing their guests, and people will come in and have dinner inside. So I don't, yeah. And why not allow everyone to enjoy that beautiful property?
Thank you, Jenny and Eric. Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak for, or young lady back there, please?
My name is Kara Nessar, and I am one of the neighbors, not a nervous neighbor. We share a boundary with the Noren Vega. So I speak for my husband and myself. What Jenny just said, we are not innkeepers, but as neighbors and as residents of Camden, totally on board with this. We are the ones who would be directly impacted, as we live right next door. We have no problem whatsoever. In fact, I've tasted Phelps food, and I'll be the first one there, if this is allowed to go. And I also feel, we moved here from out of state. I could have been in warm Florida tonight, and instead, I'm still wearing my coat. But we moved here because we didn't want the commercial development that I saw happening all around me, where we used to live. And we chose Camden, and we chose our neighborhood for a reason. So I certainly understand people's nervousness about that. And I would not stand up here publicly and support something if I felt that that was going to happen to the place that I chose to come to. But I don't fear that at all. And I agree totally with what you said, that the residents of Camden should have a chance to go into that beautiful place. And we're not gonna stay there. I mean, we don't need a place, a hotel. We have homes here. So at least we can get to go in, sit down in the beautiful dining room, and enjoy that. It's a part of Camden. It's a beautiful part of Camden. And only people from out of town get to really experience it. That doesn't seem really right. So, speaking as a neighbor, I just want to go on record, my husband is out of state, he's out of the country, but he was here for the last one. And we both feel unequivocally that this can only benefit Camden. What makes one place strong makes everybody strong. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Did I see any other hands in the back, gentlemen in the back, please?
That was just so perfectly stated. Thank you. I was just delighted. I just loved that. I was, I don't need to say anything.
Let me be very brief. My name is James Landy. I live on 18 Belmont Avenue. And I've been coming to Camden with my wife for nearly 25 years. My experience has been limited and focused to the Noren Vega during its two generations of basically failed ownership and management. I also, having lived the early part of my life in Long Branch, New Jersey, would like to relate to you that seven presidents lived and summered in Long Branch, New Jersey. And there's only one building that remains of the seven that were summer cottages there. And I bring this up to you because buildings of the Noren Vega's quality and architecture are always at risk. And during the 23 years that we have been patrons of the Noren Vega, we finally have the combination with Sue and Phil to maintain the property and have that exquisite building and that wonderful experience with fabulous food that will keep that building going, not only now, but in the future. It is that combination of high-quality food and that fantastic atmosphere that will keep that building in Camden in good repair and hopefully will preserve it for others to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much. Did I see any other, anybody, yes, please, young lady here.
Good evening. My name is Gwen Clemmons. I am the general manager at Whitehall. And thank you for having us here this evening. So currently, as the ordinance is written, we do have the ability to run a restaurant. We are not running a restaurant currently just because the model that they had started with, with the current owners, was not economically feasible at this point in time. If this was to go forward, it would allow us to continue to be able to adapt the business, to make sure that if we want to open a restaurant in the future, we can, if that is something that makes sense economically, so that we can sustain this inn that's been running since 1901 and is a historic property here in town. I'm new to the community, and places like Whitehall and the Noren Vega are part of the reason that I came to a community like this, because they're important to the community and what the community kind of represents, and why people come here. And for us, it is important to be able to do that. And I see why Noren Vega is looking to be able to do this. And I too stand up and support, you know, my competitors in the market, because we are stronger as we work together, and really fully support them being able to do that, and us also being able to do that in the future. Right now, unless we run a restaurant in this current season at any point, we would lose our special exception that we have now. At this point, we aren't planning to run one this season. We're just not there. But that may have to change if this ordinance goes forward. And we really do want to make sure that what we're doing is a good model for us, for us to be sustainable. But it would be nice to have the opportunity, to have the flexibility. We now do have people come into the bar. If we were able to even offer a light food service, that kind of thing in the future, so that the community could come in the doors, that that's a wonderful thing for us to be able to maintain.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much. I saw one of them here. Dennis, or should say, Mr. McGirt.
Dennis McGirt, Camden. I am a neighbor of Noren Vega. It's a fine old building, and it should be preserved. I have no problem with them serving food to their guests, as is allowed currently. If this warrant were properly written, I would not have any problem with it. I think it's important to have a context. And I want to read the definition of the Traditional Village District. It said, "The purpose of this district is to maintain these highly livable neighborhoods, which include single-family homes, small-scale, multifamily structures, compatible residential-scale businesses, and a distinct village design." And if we approve an exception that's consistent with that, I would have no problem with it. The problem I have is that, as it's written, it does not restrict activities which would be in violation of this. I think that the one restriction in there, that they not increase the number of tables, is a good one. What I'm concerned about, as a neighbor, and several of my other neighbors who I've talked to, who are not here tonight, are concerned about activities outside. There's no restriction against serving food and/or liquor outside on the decks, which would be a big impact on the neighborhood, and certainly inconsistent with making it highly livable. If they are restricted to serving indoors, and some restriction on how late at night, that would be fine. As is, it puts neither of those restrictions on. And I think that that's inconsistent with the intention of the village district. The last time something like this came up, a number of people came out, including Parker Late, who was against it, because he said, "We have adequate zoning restrictions for a reason." Jack Sanford said, "Zoning by business plan is a bad idea." And that's a little bit what this is. So if we're going to make a change like this, I think it's important to do a balanced approach to it, that we do preserve the livability of the neighborhood for all of the people that live there, as well as allowing them to do whatever they can to help make some more money. Without a restriction on outside service, I think it would severely affect the livability of the neighborhood. And I would like to see that added. So as is, I don't think this is ready to go forward for a warrant.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you very much for coming. Is there anybody else's hand that I missed in the audience, speaking for, against, or just want to talk to this issue? All right, with that, I'll close the public discussion, we can call them up again later, and turn it to the discussion by the Select Board. You want to start, Mark?
I'll start. I'm the liaison to the Planning Board, where this has been a discussion for three, four meetings. And Jeremy Martin, our Planning Director, has been leading the meetings. And it's changed from what it originally was to something different, which I think solves Dennis's concerns. It was changed so that any changes, they have to, Jeremy can spell this out, but for specific changes, that they need to go to the ZBA for changes. And at that point, neighbors have the ability and the right to go and say, "We'd like to prevent it from being outdoors. We'd like to prevent it from being late at night," whatever. And so it was the best way, solution to, instead of zoning little by little by little, you know, making every little thing in this thing, it gives the opportunity for the neighbors to have a say in those particular things and be judged that way. Jeremy, do you want to speak on that?
Sure.
Because I think that's what I got from the meetings.
I certainly appreciate Dennis's concerns, and the Planning Board did as well. And I think where you were going is, there was a proposal proposed, and we, the Planning Board listened to Mr. McGirt, and Deb Dodge had some concerns as well. And, you know, they threw out the suggestion, or I think it was Deb who initially said it, about the special exception process. And what that specialist exception process does is, it does address those impacts on neighbors. So, and just to correct what you said, Mark, when we say any change, that would be, includes offering food to the general public. So they're going to have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special exception. And in that, standards for the special exception, and I'll just read them, just for everyone's benefit, "The zoning board shall find that the proposed use nor the proposed site upon which the use will be located is of such character that the use will have significant adverse impact upon the value or quiet possession of surrounding properties greater than would normally occur from such a use in the zoning district. In reaching a determination on the standard, the board shall consider the size of the proposed use compared with surrounding uses, the intensity of the proposed use, including a mountain type of traffic to be generated, hours of operation, expansive pavement, and similar measures of intensity of use compared with surrounding uses, potential for generation of noise, dust, odor, vibration, glare, and other nuisances, unusual physical characteristics of the site, including the size of the lot, shape of the lot, topography and soils, which tend to aggravate adverse impacts upon surrounding properties, and the degree to which landscaping, fencing, and other design elements have been incorporated to mitigate impacts on surrounding properties." And then they also review impacts on municipal facilities, as well as the ability for traffic to safely move in and out of the site, making sure pedestrians aren't impacted, make sure the capacity of the street network to accommodate the proposed use is okay, and that we have sewage capacity and water facilities available. And then, so I think that's what that does. And so where Dennis is coming from, and I appreciate it, I will say, I mean, that's something the Zoning Board of Appeals would take up. And that's the process and the place for that to happen. I will say, currently, the Noren Vega is allowed to use the outside areas already under their existing business. And they do. And I'm not sure if there's, I'm sure there, I've heard at the meeting that there are some impacts when there's some, I think there was a comment about a moose, and, you know, neighbors heard the guests oinking and eyeing over, you know, wildlife that was traversing through the property. I mean, those are impacts that happen, but they're happening currently. I'm not sure they would, you know, be significantly or at all increased from this use. But that's up to an owner, the owner of a Noren Vega or the Whitehall Inn. If they left theirs laps, they would have to go back through special exception process, and they'd have to prove to the zoning board that they were going to mitigate any adverse impacts on the neighbors. That's the process. And I think it's an appropriate one. I will just add, the village district, and I appreciate the purpose section that Dennis mentioned, and I do value that. But if you also look at all of the other commercial uses that are allowed in the village district, I mean, there's funeral homes that are allowed, there's a lot of nursing homes that are allowed in that zoning district as well, that very much would diverge from a residential character of what, you know, people would think is the residential character of High Street there. I'm just throwing that out there, because those are currently allowed in the zoning ordinance already.
Taylor, do you want to clarify?
Are you stepping in here, are you?
No, I'm going around the loop.
I think Bob's gonna get the last word.
Can I mention one more thing, if you don't mind?
You can hang up there. We got a few questions for you.
Really quick. And I think the zoning board is a good avenue, and we talked about it at the Planning Board, and just, and I think I mentioned it at the last time we talked about this, two weeks ago. The Captain Swift Inn had a similar situation, where they were looking to expand their business outside. Neighbors were concerned about it. They had to go through special exception approval process to get that approved. The zoning board process worked out. And the neighbors, obviously, they're not using it yet, because we're in the middle of, you know, negative 25 wind chill, and people aren't outside on decks. But they will be. But in that case, there was concern, and the neighbors and the applicant, you know, worked on it, and the zoning board worked very hard to get it right. And I think the zoning board got it very right. And it right, and I think the zoning board got it very right. And they work very hard to get it right.
Thank you. Taylor?
Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. You know, I paid attention to the planning board discussion on this, and I think that they've done a great job in hearing everybody's opinions and concerns. I think the bottom line for me is, you know, I do see a great deal of value in the, what the inns and our bed and breakfast provide for the future of Camden, and I think that, for me, that's a huge staple of our community, and I think giving them the ability to, you know, we've talked, we talk a lot about restaurants, and particularly year-round restaurants, and, you know, we have neighbors from north and north, south, who are doing a great job in their communities, with new up-and-coming places that are available to go to, and I think that having more of them is a positive thing. So, I'm very much in favor of this.
Thanks, Taylor. Now, Ms. McKeller.
I too have found myself watching the planning board meetings on YouTube, several rounds of them. I mean, this, to me, is just like a no-brainer, and I feel, thank you to, you know, the interested parties for actually being willing to go through these, it's almost like a long scavenger hunt, or an obstacle course, or a marathon, sometimes just trying to do something in Camden. And I wonder sometimes, you know, these people that come to town, and they, like, save the American Boathouse, or they restore Norm Bega, or whatever, if they knew, when they started, like, the maze of back and forth and dead ends and all that they were going to have to go through, if they, you know, if you would have done it. So I'm glad we've sort of, like, hooked you in, and now you're... But, you know, so this isn't even the end of it. So if we vote yes tonight, then all that is, is just permission to put that to voters. So the voters will vote on it, and then that will earn you the privilege of being able to go before the ZBA to plead your case. So there'll be another hearing, and so I definitely think we've earned that right. I'm very excited for the possibility of maybe the public that lives here might be able to go into these treasured historic buildings. I think all the inns should be looking at this as a way of evolving their business model, but an enthusiastic yes for me.
Cool. In general, I've always stated, I don't think towns should get in the way of businesses. However, that I do understand that there are occasions where, when certain operations are in tight neighborhoods, stuff does occur, and we have to be careful with that, clearly. But what, for me, was telling was, I was shoveling snow on my deck, no party, a couple of weeks ago, and I was looking to my, property to my south is vacant, it's four acres, it's vacant, it's a very narrow lot, and I said to myself, "If I had to choose a neighbor, I would prefer to have somebody who's trained in hospitality." What is hospitality? That is, how to take care of the public. They know how to do it. Versus, a very nice family to move in there and just happen to love to have loud parties on the weekend on their deck, and we can't do anything about it until, what, 11 o'clock at night, when the sound ordinance kicks in.
Screaming children.
You know, I'll take the hospitality thing any day of the week, frankly, because, again, they're trained in this business. That's what they do. Also, all the great things have been said about the various inns, the Whitehall, Camden Harbor Inn, and Norm Bega also, but, yeah, this is kind of a no-brainer. But, at the end of the day, all we're creating here is another opportunity for all the residents of Camden to enjoy an absolutely superb facility, yes, with an absolutely superb chef, too, but that's secondary in my mind to the first part, because it's what it is. So I'm an absolute yes, and I'm moving it toward the warrant also.
Ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I can make a motion that we move to warrant the Camden zoning ordinance amendments, amendment, Article 3, Section 2, definitions...
Read the titles.
Point B, amend Article 8, District Regulations, Section 7, Traditional Village District, Item B, for permitted uses, and amend Article 8, District Regulations, Regulation 7, Traditional Village District, Item C, uses permitted as special exceptions by adding a new Number 16.
Second.
Any further discussion?
All's in favor.
Four zero, Beth.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and back to the select board agenda. Do you want to take a break? We'll just take a two-minute break while everybody departs.
Is that sound the meeting playing back? I don't know. It's upstairs? That's what I thought, yeah. Oh, is it on somebody's phone? We're hearing the meeting.
No, I heard, when I was sitting there, I heard this all along, like, as the meeting was going on.
You heard the news specifically?
But, yes, and so when I was over there, I could hear your voice, and then it went, and then I heard Mark's voice.
Only us?
Well... So I think it's just a delay, whatever's playing, but I'm here, I can hear your voice. Over there, I heard someone talking. I didn't know who it was. Here, I can hear you.
Oh, interesting. Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
Are you watching this?
Let's get back on agenda. Okay, all right. Don't get mad, we'll get even.
I like listening to myself anyway.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to get back to the agenda, please. Your attention, please. We have a couple more items to get through here tonight, not least of which is item A, which is to bring us back to discussing miscellaneous ordinance development status. Are you going to, Jeremy going to lead that discussion also? She shouldn't have sat down, Jeremy.
Quick.
Your mic, your mic is off. Anyway, live and learn, live and learn. Jeremy, go ahead.
You're welcome. I was afraid for all of us. All right. So, I don't know what the name, what the item is actually.
It's a discussion of miscellaneous ordinance development status.
Your favorite topic.
In general terms.
So, as you recall, I don't know how many months ago, two months ago or three months ago, I came before you.
It was like six months ago.
It wasn't that long. It was only two months ago, I think, when we talked about trying to prioritize a list.
Maybe, so maybe before Jeremy starts, I'd just like to say that, you know, we had probably a list of close to a dozen different ordinances that, you know, at some point, either a committee, or, you know, a member of the select board, or maybe it was, you know, a staff member had noticed something and kind of, you know, came up with an idea of something we might want to work on. And when we brought that list a couple of months ago, the idea was to try to prioritize, you know, things that we could potentially start working on, maybe have something ready for the June ballot, maybe not, maybe, you know, they needed to go further out. And it was a very difficult discussion, because I don't think there was anything that anybody was willing to say was not important. It was more about, you know, what's kind of urgent and needs to be done right now, you know, what is a priority for moving forward, maybe in the future. And I don't think we did a great job getting that list down to a very manageable level.
You think?
And it's kind of put Jeremy in a position where he's spent about 95% of his time on, you know, ordinance development, discussion with committees, back and forth with committees...
And the public.
Public, and members of the select board, and, yeah, it's just been, it's just been very time-consuming, and I think that, you know, this, it's about ordinance development, but I think it's also about, you know, how we best use the time of our staff to do these sorts of things.
Agreed.
And also managing expectations as far as what we can get done, and, you know, and we place a lot of urgency on getting things ready for the next town meeting, but sometimes, when it comes down to it, there are certain things that we just, you know, they need, they need a certain amount of time, and we can't force it.
Yes. I think we should, we are here to discuss the status, and I would underscore what you just said, because what I have seen, and I think all of us have, is we're victims of our own success. Having Jeremy on board has been great. However, and by the way, I don't really think the public can really, in general, understand what all the things the town deals with. I'm amazed by myself on a daily basis to see the many elements that we have to balance with a limited staff. We're not unlimited. We have the advantage of committees and the like, too, but doesn't, that doesn't change the process. In fact, it can complicate it at times. And what I've seen, which is the bit, and we have to address it soon, is that 90, 95% of your time on these items is frankly not good. It's frankly unacceptable, because there are many initiatives the town is involved in, and for which we've fallen down on. Not your problem, it's, I think I'd blame it on us, because we haven't prioritized. So, long story short here, what I'm trying to say is, there's going to be a need for us to address this as a town, with Audra, about, and it may, I'm not saying it will or won't, it just, it could impact what we get done by when. And there's nothing we ever, ever gets brought to us that's not important, nothing. There's never a proposal, "Well, it's rare, it's very rare." It's all about a person's priorities, and they're all well-intentioned, but sometimes we're going to have to make hard decisions. And we collectively, the select board, didn't make hard decisions about prioritization of ordinances. So, with that said, we'll all have an opportunity to speak to them, but why don't you just go with the general status of what's being played out right now?
Sure. I'm going to blame myself a little bit, too. Because when we had this list, I didn't discourage you from saying, "Go ahead with that list." I think I said I could do a little more, but...
Right.
We don't always know what the things are going to be that are going to take up all that time.
I will say, I mean, I've been here almost a year. It'll be a year, March 19th or 23rd. And I think now I have a good sense of what this town is, and how this town operates and functions. So going forward, that's a positive, because I think I know how and where I can prioritize things. And I also think, and I may have had this conversation with, you know, some of you individually, when we're talking ordinance development, what I need, I think I need something from you guys, too. And that is a little more, I don't know if direction's the right word, or work session, a couple times a year, maybe, to fine-tune what is on the agenda, I mean, planning, like, amendment-wise, ordinance-wise, what you want out of them, and then I can take them from there. Because how this has played out, unfortunately, and it was, it was very insightful how Rosie, Rosie made a comment, Rosie Curtis, the planning board chair, the other day, when we were talking about cannabis, and I'll get to where we are with cannabis, where she said, you know, "This is great, and we'll have an opportunity for a public comment, and then we can," I think she was referring to, "we'll be able to change an ordinance based on what the public comment was at the public hearing."
No.
And I said, "Whoa, that's not how the process works." So, the ordinance is the ordinance. All those work sessions that we have with the planning board, it gets hammered out, and then the planning board has a hearing on it. It can't substantially change, you know, there can't be substantive changes to it, and then they have to vote on it. And then I bring it to you guys, and then you guys decide whether or not you're going to move forward and have a hearing like you did tonight. But you can't make substantive changes to that either, at that point.
Right.
And then, if you do, then...
If we're at a deadline, we can.
If we're under the deadlines, correct.
Right, right.
Because then I have to go back to the planning board, run through a hearing process with them, with your changes, and then we come back to you with... So, I think, big picture, what would be helpful would be a couple of work sessions throughout the year that I can say, "Okay, this is what I'm thinking, ordinance-wise. Are you collectively okay with this, you know, this direction?"
Right.
Because, at the last minute, if you, you all don't like something, or if the planning board doesn't like something, then it scuttles the whole thing and all that time and effort that went into it, and that's just not productive. So, I think you'll hear a handful of examples of that, as I tell you where we are. So, public hearings-wise and ordinance-wise, we just had one, and so you understand that, and that went through, and that's great, and I'm glad that's going to voters, which is a wonderful thing in town government, where you all don't make the decision, town voters do, and that's, it's a great check and balance on everything. Erosion control, that was one, we know where that, what happened with that. I'll be working with the planning board to tweak that a little bit, and before, and we're not going to do that for June, and maybe we can do it, easy town meeting, like, special town meeting in the summer with things that aren't controversial, maybe. But that's one where I think we can, I can bring something to you all before I go to the planning board for a public hearing, go through that process, to let you know what the changes were. Formula-based food is another one. This is, again, I think you all know what the history is here. Dunkin' Donuts tried to come here a decade ago. The town got all up in arms about Dunkin' Donuts and the impact it would have on local business. There was, you know, talk of a moratorium. I think everyone thought that that went into place. Dunkin' Donuts backed out. Didn't want to be here, I don't think, with all of the negativity surrounding it. They didn't think they were supported in town, so they left. Everyone still thought Dunkin' Donutses were prohibited from, you know, in town.
Right.
In fact, they weren't. When I got here a year ago, Dunkin' Donuts started talking to us again about coming into town. And then I heard from planning board members, and I heard from some, some of the public that were concerned, that once they realized that there was no prohibition on formula-based fast-food type of establishments in town. So I started drafting an ordinance, took it to the planning board. We've done this a couple of times with the planning board. The definition's trying to define something that we don't want, but at the same time, trying to draft something that would allow something we do want is challenging. And so I don't know where we're going to get to with formula-based at this present time, but I think it's conceivable we can have an ordinance ready for a public hearing on March 21st of the planning board, which would get it to you guys on March or April 9th, I think.
March 26th.
Right. April 9th would be my last day. I think I can get it to you guys. March 26th is when you guys would have a meeting, scheduling the public hearing on April 9th. So I have to work on that, and I know the public is interested in that one. It is challenging. People have questioned the legality of it and the constitutionality of it. There are communities all across the country from, what is the town in Mass, that we just, I just talked about at the planning board meeting?
Newburyport.
What'd you say?
I just said tons of them.
Yeah, there's a ton of them.
There's so many that it doesn't even...
There are, there are. In Massachusetts, in New York, in California, in Washington, Bainbridge Island, I mean, there's, they're all over. So finding the one that works, again, with trying to allow businesses that we, you know, we think are appropriate to come to town, that's the challenge, and so I'm working to figure out how to do that.
Can we talk about that, like, so we don't have to?
Sure. I'd rather talk about it here than when it's too late.
Than staying with me at 9:30 at night about my grievances.
That's true. I'd mind it if the kids are asleep.
Right. That's the problem with watching all the planning board meetings now. I mean, I just think that we, my big thing is that we don't get to a point where the planning board agrees to something, and then it comes here, and, because I do think the concept is something that the vast majority of Camden residents support, and I'm talking about things like Dunkin' Donuts, with 8,500 locations nationwide. That was the, that was what inspired the reaction from Camden residents. That's, we call those change, we call them franchises, we call that's fast food, that's all these ways. But, like, all the ordinances that I've seen at the planning board have been, if you meet three of the four, three of the six criteria, if you meet this... if you meet three of the four, three of the six criteria, if you meet this, if you meet this, and it's just, I look at it and it's like, and it started with people saying things to me on Facebook, like, what is this? It's, you know, am I going to have to shut down my business? So I have two locations and my, my employees wear uniforms and I have the same sign in both places and primarily serve in disposable, you know, ready to eat food. And it's, you have to look at it and you basically, it's one more thing that you need to hire a lawyer to figure out if it applies to your business or not. And I don't, I just can't support that. There's, there are small chain, Flapbread is a franchise. Um, there, there are chains all, you know, all over the place that are doing really cool things where there are four locations and you can be like, then, you know, those locations are Wisconsin, California, New York, and, you know, somebody could open up the fifth location of Love Burger, for instance, um, which is like this cool.
Love Burger is coming here?
No, I actually, being on their site, I was like, I might start a Love Burger franchise location in Camden. It's all about like lowering your carbon footprint with the food that you eat and a better vegan burger. And, and I don't think that that is the kind of thing that, you know, I'm sure there are some people that are like, no, no chains at all in Camden. We don't want that at all. But I, I think that's where we're going to get into a lot of, even like a, Jenna had brought up, um, Luke's Lobster has like twenty-seven locations.
Right.
Really responsible company that does all kinds of good things apparently. I don't know anything about them, but I don't, I think that's where that kind of stuff, Camden residents are divided on and probably more on the side of like, let's just let it happen. I don't think they want an Olive Garden at, you know, say that, if that Chinese restaurant were not to be there, I don't think they want Olive Garden moving in. But that's, again, not fast food. So, what I want, the only way that I, I think I personally can support this at this point, is if we do it based on a number. There are places, not in Maine, can't find any that have, any towns in Maine that have done the ordinance this way, but in other places, they've set it at, you know, businesses, you, uh, a ban on businesses with more than say like a hundred locations nationwide. To me, that's a comfortable enough margin that we're not going to be arguing about the Flapbreds of the world. We're going to, you can look at it, you can know, a business owner can know immediately, that applies to me, that doesn't apply to me. Um, I don't, I think we should aim for like, sort of the extreme of what we are pretty sure that Camden residents don't want and not try to get into the weeds of like, do they want a, another Flapbread location or not? Um, that's my two cents.
Um, I don't want to discuss each one of these audience, I don't want to, but I think in, this is a classic example, well put, of how complicated these issues have become. Simplistically, nobody want, everybody wants to ban the D-word. And, but, but when you do it, you open up Pandora's box. And unless we can find a way to do it cleanly, neatly, it's just going to be, that's a real challenge, and not prohibit companies like this one in Portland, it's becoming nationally known and going national, that entity coming here to Camden is myopic in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I don't have a hundred.
Who's that?
I'd rather not talk about companies. I'll give it to you later. Cause I just don't like using names. That's why I use the D, that's why I use the D-word, you know, for Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, right. We don't want to hear any of that.
No, I just, I just don't think it's appropriate to talk about entities. But there are those things, you don't want to prohibit those things. And that does concern me dramatically. And how you, you know, I'm not even sure you can do that, to be honest, truth, practically speaking, because the world of business is so dynamic and, and so varied. There's also ways of penciling oneself around these issues by making subtle changes to their corporate structures too, as happened in Europe with, with, um, uh, the S-word.
Yeah, but that's so that they can get into like New York City or something.
No, well, that's true.
Very few are going to care so much about getting into Camden.
I totally agree with you. I totally agree with you, but.
I, I hear everything you're saying. I think there's.
But I mean, what I'm saying is, it, it, unfortunately, I'm not saying this one may, but it could get to a point where this is so complicated and so difficult that you have to say, wait a minute, you know, does any entity who knows this town, doesn't want them here, want to be here? And that's what happened in two thousand and nine.
Well, I don't think there's any way we're going to build a perfect net.
I agree with that.
And I also think that, you know, getting it as close to perfect as we want it takes time. It just does. It takes a lot of discussion and time.
Absolutely. And that brings us to the.
A number, a number.
That brings us to.
I will, I will say this one, this one, the planning board, um, gave me some very good suggestions on a definition the other day.
They did.
And so to get rid of this list, I, I, and I have a draft that can get rid of that list and I can tweak that to add a number.
And, and it simplified it. It simplified it. Mark, you want to say something?
I was just going to say, that's why.
Yep.
This, the, the measure that you were talking about didn't pass the planning board because it just didn't make sense.
They were hitting the same.
But I think that there were good suggestions at that meeting.
There was.
And.
Yeah, yeah.
And it gives you a, it gives you the roadmap you need to try and find a, a better answer. So, I think we let Jeremy do his job and see what he comes up with.
But there'll be, there'll be one on the agenda for Mark seven.
Even for the first in Maine, I think this is another thing that, this is the way I feel. I don't know if everybody else feels this way, that sometimes we, to be, to play it safe, it's easier to find an ordinance that we can copy from Maine because we know, okay, it's same state, all these things. And, and when we don't find that, I, it feels like we oftentimes settle for, like, not necessarily the best thing, but just the thing that we can copy safely. I feel that Camden is like the best possible town to say at times, you know what, we can come up with something better than already exists in Maine. And I'm not afraid of being the first town in Maine to have an ordinance that says this or that. I think we're the first one with a polystyrene float ban. Um, I'd like to see Camden leading the way, even if that makes, you know, the town attorney a little uncomfortable because he can't a hundred percent guarantee that it's already been tested in court. Um, so I think we should give Jeremy the, the.
Gotcha. Got that one.
Let's go on, let's go on to the next one.
All right. The big one I think that we should talk about is adult, um, use cannabis. Um, so as you know, the working group, um, you guys appointed a working marijuana, working task force or working group to come up, draft some recommendations. Um, I think that process was pretty good. Um, I came in at the very end of it. Um, they, in my opinion, were not looking kind of holistically at all of the issues that I tend to look at or a planning person tends to look at and impacts on the town neighborhoods. Um, and compatibility with existing uses, compatibility with the zoning ordinance. And they frankly proposed something that I, I think was, um, too much. And I told them it was too much initially. Um, and they didn't really take that guidance. And I, I mean, I understand, they were well under this, into this process. So.
I don't think so.
Um, so then they gave the recommendations to you folks. Um, you guys passed them off to the planning board and myself to work on and try to put into ordinance form. Um, I had drafted what they had, um, made some minor tweaks to it, took it to the planning board. Um, the planning board, um, at first was pretty good with my tweaks to what, what I had proposed. And then the planning board kind of threw me for, threw me for one when they wanted me to go back to what the working group was proposing.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, this is new to Maine. It's new. Um, it's just, it's a new thing. And for us to, um, allow certain use, this use, um, in most, all of the zoning districts I was concerned with, um, and.
As a special exception, all of this would have been a special exception.
That is true.
Let's not terrify the people listening.
I, I understand. I understand. But I think what is, um, um, so what they didn't really address was outdoor, outdoor odor. And outdoor odor is a significant.
You should for the public, what portion of marijuana rule you're talking about.
Correct. All right. Sorry about that. So, there are, when you look at the adult use cannabis law in Maine, there are four, um, marijuana cannabis establishments allowed under the law. And there are retail stores, there are cultivation facilities, there are products manufacturing facilities, and there are testing labs. Um, the one that caused a lot of concern was taken out by the legislature, that was social clubs. So, when the town had a, did a straw poll, as I understand, I was not here when this happened, they did a straw poll on marijuana, it was retail sales and social clubs. Social clubs has scared everyone across the state.
Yeah.
So, the state took social clubs out. So, I think when you look at what the town did a straw poll on, they didn't even, weren't even asked a question about cultivation. They weren't even asked the question about products manufacturing. They weren't even asked the question about testing labs.
It was so poorly done that it was actually misleading, just the questions actually misinformed people.
Yes, they were.
I agree. I thought the questions were, were confusing.
Really frustrating that that was.
And just so everyone knows, for those that are watching at home, um, in Maine now it is, you have to opt in. So, there will be no marijuana establishments at all unless the town votes to opt in. And we can opt into all four of those. We can opt into one of those. We can opt, we can do whatever we want with them. Um, so the mayor, the task force working group that was looking at it at the time, they really were focusing on cultivation facilities because they wanted to give, um, people the opportunity to, um, you know, start a, a business and, and, and do this as, um, you know, do this as some, in an endeavor. So, um.
Can you go over what's legal right now? Real quick, just like.
Sure. What is legal right now is, 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 um, it's legal for a, um, an adult, a twenty-one or older to grow three, have three mature, um, cannabis plants in their home or on their property. And they have to be secure, um, that can be in your backyard. Um, it can be fenced in.
Per person.
Per person. That's three adult plants per person. That said, it does not.
An unlimited number of.
An unlimited number of immature plants, unlimited number of clones, unlimited number of seedlings. Um, that's currently legal right now. Um, I'm sure there are people in Camden that are growing legal cannabis today. Um, and in the summertime, they're probably growing it outside legal, um, in their neighborhood even, likely. Um, so that's legal currently. So, um, when the cannabis working group is looking at cultivation facilities and the planning board then looked at them, there are four types of cultivation facilities allowed under state law. There's tier, it's tier one through tier four. Tier ones are five hundred square foot canopy. And this is the outside canopy of the, um, adult, they're flowering female plants. So, that can be thirty plants. Um, so, um, and then there go to a level tier two, which is two thousand, a tier three, which is seven thousand canopy. And then you can get up to.
Canopy or?
Canopy. So, when I say square, that's square feet of canopy. Sorry. So, tier one, they don't.
Low V.
What's that?
I think it's just hard for a lot of people, at least for me, to immediately visualize that.
It is. People have a hard time visualizing what ten thousand square feet is or twenty thousand square feet is. That's a half an acre. Twenty thousand square feet is a half an acre.
Twenty thousand square feet is a half an acre.
Half an acre.
Uh, just under half an acre.
Forty-two, forty-two.
Forty-three thousand, five sixty is an acre.
Is an acre.
So, um, so the, and just so people know too, there's allowed indoor and outdoor. Um, I am not aware of any community that has gone down the road of outdoor grows, um, allowed. Um, every community I know that has opted in is opting in indoors.
In Maine.
In Maine. And, um, Maine is not obviously a great climate to grow, um, cannabis. You have a handful of months a year to actually do it. And we're very moist and it's very humid, which is not, is not conducive to growing cannabis. Um, that said, the working group proposed, um, tiers one through four. That's a five hundred square foot canopy, a two thousand square foot canopy, a seven thousand, and a twenty thousand square foot canopy, um, in multiple, in almost all the zones in town. Um, I pulled that back some.
On parcels over two and a half, two acres.
That's where I added a lot of that into it, but they started going down that road. Um, and.
All by special exception.
All by special exception.
And meeting all nuisance.
The one challenge is the odor from outdoor grows. And they did not really, I know they tried to look at it and said we would handle it as a nuisance, but frankly, from a zoning perspective and a land use and a regulatory perspective, if you allow something and you allow a twenty thousand square foot outdoor canopy grow and don't have restrictions, you can't manage the odor from that.
Right.
Um, it, it is very stinky. Um, some people may like it, other people probably don't. Um, so what I had proposed and knowing that, um, knowing that this is, this is our first shot at this, and, um, what I had proposed to the planning board was I pulled back the tier three and four grows altogether.
Right.
Um, in town. I had eliminated them altogether.
So, just the five hundred and two thousand.
I'm proposing the five hundred and the two thousand. Um, the two thousand, or you can do outdoor grow, I'm proposing outdoor grows, um, on lots in the village extension, the coastal residential, the RU one, the RU two, on lots of five acres or more.
Mm-hmm.
And, and recommending a setback of three hundred feet from property lines. And this is just for those smaller grows.
Right.
Um, we can change all this.
Sure.
In the future, if we find that someone does, does have an outdoor grow and odor's not a problem. Um, indoor, you can control odor by, um, scrubbers and filters in your ventilation systems. Those are highly, um, um, you know, sophisticated grows generally. Um, I don't know if any of you have seen them, but if you go to any of the licensed grow facilities in Maine, they're very, um, sophisticated operations and they manage the light, the water, the air. It's highly managed.
Very expensive also.
Very expensive. Um, so I'm recommending now that we do tiers one and two. Um, I'm not proposing, um, in my current draft, any in the village zone. I have heard from multiple people at planning board meetings and personally that have walked into my office or called to me, and they're concerned about village, the village district, um, for grows. And I have heated those, I mean, I heard those concerns and I'm recommending that we don't do it presently in the village zone. Um, so that's where we are with cannabis. Um, eventually, and you know, this, I'll have something, I think we'll have, we're going to have another meeting on March seventh, the planning board, next Thursday. Um, that meeting starts at four o'clock because of budget meetings. So, the planning board starts at four, runs from four to right before, um, the budget meeting starts. Um, so it's going to have to be a focused meeting.
Again, this is for cultivation only.
This is for cultivation only. And then we won't have anything for voters for retail sales or products manufacturing or testing or anything like that for June. It's just cultivation. Um.
And medical, are we going to?
And, uh, medical's a whole nother, um, thing. Um, the state law on medical, um, frankly, the state can't answer questions, very simple questions that I have about because, um, how the opt-in that the legislature did for adult use cannabis, they then changed the medical law effective December of this past year of two thousand and eighteen, that requires a municipality to opt in for retail storefronts. And that's for retail storefronts. I have asked the state, please, do you have a definition for a retail storefront? And they don't have a definition. They don't, they say, well, it's a storefront. All right, okay. I mean, what if I, it doesn't appear to be a retail shop at all and it's just a, I have an office and I'm meeting with my patients. Is that a retail storefront? And they said, well, no. I said, well, what is a retail storefront then? I mean, they couldn't understand it. They don't have a definition for it. Um, and my understanding of the law is that you have to, you have to opt in for retail storefronts. And there's no, nothing at all speaks to opting in for grows, um, for medical caregiver grows and all that. So, as I see it, we would, I know there are caregivers that are growing in Camden. This would not impact them and we would allow them to continue to grow because.
Outside and.
Yes.
Nobody's ever had a problem.
And no one's had a problem.
Yeah, true.
Granted, the, the caregivers, um, under the law prior, you were allowed to grow for five patients. Um, so, and you're allowed a certain number of patients and, uh, or certain number of plants per patient. So, you can't really get, you couldn't really get beyond the tier one under the old rules. Now, they changed the rules again in December that allows a caregiver to grow for, um, other caregivers too. Um, because sometimes a caregiver's crop might fail. So, that caregiver needs to be able to somehow purchase product. So, they did work some deals in the law to allow caregivers to share. Um, so we're not going to go down that road right now. I don't think it's necessary. We haven't had anyone clamoring for, to open up a storefront. And if someone called about opening up a, um, medical, um, cultivation facility, I would, I'm not concerned about it and that we'd let it happen.
Nobody's probably, it's very small chance of anybody doing any kind of commercial marijuana growing in Camden.
Cultivation, cultivation.
Cultural cultivation in Camden. It's just not that likely to happen.
It's not that likely to happen. I, I, I would tend to agree with you on that. Um, there are not, not a lot of towns that are being proactive either, um, on opting in. So, um, you know, I think, I think this is a good measured approach, um, to kind of tiptoe into adult use cannabis in Camden. I, I do.
I, you know, I, I support the scaled back thing too. I just do think it's also important to not, you know, I think.
I just do think it's also important to not, you know, I think in the planning office, sometimes, even just hanging out over there, it seems like a lot of the complaints come there. And so, it's not the place you go when you just wanna express general enthusiasm for Camden not being a place that is gonna say no. You don't stop by the planning office or write emails to say that. So, um, I've gotten one email expressing concern about this issue. There have been numerous newspaper articles. I've had a couple people verbally express concern. But also, a lot of people that are just like, thank God Camden is not just saying no to everything.
I agree with that.
But they don't, you know, they don't stop by the planning office to say that, so that's why I think, in general, it can't just be, you know, if the, I, I do support what you've done here, but I don't think in general, when the, if the planning board, first of all, the select board said, go for it with what the working groups did. Then the planning board came and said the same thing. And then, what I'm hearing from you is, some people have come in and complained. Which, I mean, I've talked to you about it too, I support, I, I too, the more I've learned about like, oh, the smell, I don't, I don't know what that is and how it's mitigated, and so I don't wanna sabotage the whole thing by going too far. I think the climate aspect of it is, and the energy use, there's a very, very good reason for us to be encouraging outdoor grows. That said, I don't, the smell part of it, I think, I, I support the scaled back.
I hear ya, I mean, I've tried, I, I will say, I've tried in the planning board meetings to, um, just remind people that you will smell it legally today. You know, if people are growing in their backyard, a neighbor is, is going to smell some adult-use cannabis growing because their neighbor is growing it legally. And so, if you have five people that are twenty-one, living in a house, you go, you got fifteen mature plants, which is not far from a tier one. So, you know, I think this is all new, and I, I think we're getting there, and, um, I would just, um, you know, I have a job to do, and I'm trying to give you, um, the town, I think, the best, my recommendations and professional judgment on doing this, so that's why I scaled it back, so.
Anything else on your list?
Yes.
We can also deal with this some with permitting, this would be the other way we could go, and I think it might make sense to give up, to make them get permitted and charge for that.
Well, so, here's another thing, and so, Audrey and I had talked about this, about, so, what a lot of communities, some, uh, most communities are doing, they're not only permitting, you have to permit them in your zoning ordinance, but some, and you don't have to do this other option, which is licensing. And so, that is something that I, we ought to talk about. Should this pass in June, we, we should, um, and I think this is a, something we should talk about now, because, so people know this. If it does pass in June, I would like to license them.
What's the difference between a permit and a license?
So, a license, would you apply to the select board, to the town annually for your license, much like a food service business does? Like a liquor license, and you go through the police department, you go through, um, code office, and they make sure that the facility is up to snuff, and, you know, um, the police department, if Randy's still here, will be able to do, you know, they do background checks on people that are in part of the operation, and so, I mean, there's a good, we can have good security measures and good, um, law enforcement's involved.
We'll pull it if they get like, three complaints or something about, uh, odors or-
Yeah, I don't know.
It's like, it's like a use of liquor license, the same thing happens, you get pulled a license.
Correct, you can. So, I think that's something we ought to do, and that's, um, we'll look at that, but I, I, I do think-
Take some of the pressure off having everything in the land use ordinance that has to do with this.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree.
So, I think that's good. I will say, part of this, um, that I didn't touch on, there are, we have in our zoning ordinance, performance standards, and we have performance standards generally, performance standards for shoreline zones, performance standards for mobile home parks, we have performance standards. And what I did, rather than including them in the special exception process, I have created a separate performance standards for cannabis cultivation facilities, um, which look at thing, that's where the setback of, we're recommending five hundred feet, um, from schools, um, is, that's in line with the cannabis or the medical caregivers. And that's where the definitions for what the schools are, how we define schools. We're also doing a setback from the Camden Library and the Harbor Park, that's where we define that. We're also doing a setback from the Snowball proper area, um, not the hinterlands at the Snowball, at Ragged Mountain, but the ski mountain piece and where, um, where people tend to hang out and where they have day camps in the summertime. And what else in there? There's provisions, there's an indemnification piece that I put in there that indemnifies the town if any federal action is taken against, uh, you know, someone. The town's not liable for any of that, um, there's-
Turn off that microphone there, Jeannie's complaining about the sound when you're talking, I don't know if maybe that-
It's my voice, maybe she hears me too much all day.
She's numb to it now.
What else do I have? So, those are, that's where those kinds of things are, the standards that would regulate, um, performance standards for marijuana. And there is a provision too, we're not allowing any indoor cultivations in the shoreline zone. Okay, and that is in line with the other commercial activities that are prohibited in the shoreline zone.
Got it.
What else do I have?
That's probably, I mean-
Inland moorings, inland moorings, Taylor touched on inland moorings, um, I've kind of, I don't know if you got what I was trying to say the other day, but I was pulling myself a little bit away from the inland mooring group.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, um-
Wise.
We spoke a little bit last week about, um, about deadlines and, um, and I think that, you know, everyone understands Jeremy's under a great deal of pressure at the moment, considering how much you have on your plate, and that, you know, your resources only go so far, and we need to do it right. And so, you know, we spoke about taking the time to, to do it right, make sure everyone's involved, and if that means it's the November ballot, for something like inland moorings, then that's okay. I think there was a little concern about, if it does get, if it's something that we move forward, then it doesn't move forward until November. There was some concern raised about what would happen in the meantime for the lake. So, that may just be something for us to discuss, um, but-
And I think we said, I think we said there that, and I, I did say that I would be involved, um, but a little more, um, up here.
Really?
But I think we said, you know, their concern was if all of a sudden there's moorings all over the place, then-
What's our recourse?
What's our recourse, then, then I think we could probably do what we were trying to do last year, or what they wanted to do, which is the moratorium at that point, and then do the ordinance, um, if it becomes a significant-
Retroactive moratorium even.
If it becomes a significant problem, so. What else do I have? Demolition delay, um, that took up a fair amount of time for a little while, um, that went to the planning board. And they had some concerns, um, this is, this was generated from the Historic Resources Committee. Very valid concerns that they have without question.
Many people in the community have, I don't, I don't, we should just keep saying it's the Historic Resources Committee, that's been-
And, you know, you look at the comp plan, it does talk about the need to, um, look at these kinds of things and establish a historic preservation commission that's in the comp plan, that the town voted on, that the select board approved. And so, demo, oftentimes demolition delay ordinances are the first step, um, to a community doing, uh, historic, um, preservation ordinance. It's not, it's a good thing, it preserves character and it preserves history. Town's gotta be ready for it, and, um, frankly, the Historic Resource Committee, um, Pat Scaly did a fantastic job, and she's quite an advocate, and she's, she's an awesome woman. She did a lot of work and, and drafted an ordinance, and I took it, and I shrunk it into like, two paragraphs. And so, I, and that was my attempt to try to get something passed, um, from a demolition delay perspective. And I think they were just taken aback a little bit by it, and I, I appreciate it. And I'll take some of that slack for that, um, but with the planning board and the Historic Resource Committee, we're gonna work together over the course of this next many months, and hope, hopefully have something, you know, looking at this kind of thing in November. So, that's where that is. One last thing, food sovereignty.
Right.
Uh, I know that, um, a couple of select board are very interested in that. It is a, um, it's a new thing, it's a very interesting, um, local, you know, um, protect local food and rights of people to buy food and from their neighbors. It's a forty, I think forty-eight towns are doing it now, um, have signed on to, um, local food sovereignty, um, ordinances. I spoke at great length today with, um, this woman Heather, I forget her last name, um, from the town of Penobscot, and she's been the, it appears to be the driving force in Maine on food sovereignty, I had a great conversation with her. I had a lot of questions, um, that she thought were great questions. So, I do think food sovereignty, um, is a thing we ought to look at. I don't know if we can get it done for June. We may be able to, I mean, that's another one, you know, you put, put it out there, and if the town votes for it, they vote for it. Are there implications out there? I threw out a question to, um, this woman today, I said, so-
Are you really gonna start off with like, the only negative thing?
It wasn't a negative thing.
Maybe a general overview of the positive first?
Why don't you?
Cause I don't think that everybody's even had that introduced here.
That's true.
There's been no introduction of the positive reasons.
Do you wanna give a little summary of food sovereignty?
Sure, I mean, the basic idea is that it, it stops it from being a crime to sell soup to your neighbor. So, if I wanna die, if I'm thinking, maybe at some point I want, might wanna start a business, or maybe just a little here on the side, I'm making birthday cakes, and my friends have noticed that I'm really good at making kids' birthday cakes, and they wanna buy one from me for their kid. Right now, if I don't have a commercial kitchen, that's a crime, basically.
Right, you'd need a state license to do that, and a state inspection to do that.
Commercial kitchen is very, very, very expensive. And so, the state passed a law that allows towns to opt in, um, with local food sovereignty ordinances that, um, basically recognize the rights of people to, to make decisions for themselves and say, okay, it's my choice, if I wanna take the risk of buying some muffins from my neighbor, even though they don't have a commercial kitchen, I should have a right to do that.
When did the state pass the law?
Uh, it was last year, wasn't it?
Couple of years ago, it was two years ago at least, because-
Last year.
I thought it was last year.
So, there's been this huge boom of, you know, last town.
Had to redo it last year because of the, the feds came in and said, you, you've gotta deal with the, the meat and the chicken.
Yes, that's right, that's, they revised it last year.
They did.
To, to, uh, meats eliminated, meat and poultry eliminated, right?
And when they say meat and poultry, they mean any meat poultry product, so even beef, beef broth is out, so you can't.
Okay, with that backdrop-
It's basically like for vegetarians too.
So, you're trying to, you, so you're-
And also, it's very much like, I was in Rockland when they did it, it was very much focused on producers and producers who wanna make value-added product. Something like, you grow tomatoes and you wanna make some sauce.
Of course.
I mean, it's not, like, there are some things that it doesn't cover that I think that we might be giving the impression right now that it does cover.
I get it, got it.
Like, even like pickles or something, so, Mar, uh, the, some of the farms, for instance, they are allowed to sell certain types of pickles at their farm stands, but as soon as they have to use vinegar, which is like on the state list of potentially hazardous ingredients, then they can't sell, you know, they're not allowed to do that. And so, I mean, I think we might wanna add a little thing in Camden's version of it that would require signage. Just alerting people to the fact that, you know, this is not a commercial, this was not, this food was not prepared in a commercially licensed kitchen. You know, so that people are free-
I think that's a great idea, I have not seen that in any of the ordinances that I've seen towns adopt.
I've heard of that, and I've also heard of ingredients on the labels too. But that's for reality things, but, but where are you at with that one, summarize where you're at with this one right now.
Well, that one, I mean, I think with some work, we could try to do something for June, that doesn't have to go to the planning board, that's, that is, and we wouldn't need to amend the zoning ordinance, because if someone wanted to do this as a home occupation, they could do it, they're still restricted from a zoning perspective, so in our home occupation, um, performance standards, it says you can't have more than ten peak entrips a day. So, um, that means you're limited to ten, ten customers for the most part a day, um, which I don't envision people having more than that. I mean, if they do, that, that's fantastic, and then they ought to get a commercial kitchen.
Yeah, I agree.
That's normally what happens, it's like to, so that people can dabble in it, and then they can say, you know what, this is going so well, I would like the ability to be able to sell to a grocery store, to have my food not just direct to a customer that comes to my house or something, but actually be able to have it in a grocery store.
There is this successful-
And then you go and you get the commercially licensed kitchen, because you now know that the bottle-
And I also, I heard, in this one, this conversation I had with this woman today, out, out in Greenwood, there was a woman who had a license, she was a baker, had a wonderful bakery licensed kitchen in Greenwood. Something happened, unfortunately, you know, something bad happened in her life, and she became disabled, and she wasn't able to do it anymore in that, the way she was in a licensed facility, and, um, her neighbors were like, oh, we'd love for you to bake again, you know? And they adopted it in Greenwood, and she's now able to do this, and she does it part-time, and she said, sells a handful of things a day.
We have existing examples, without using names, in locally, not in Camden, that has actually started a kitchen and wound up, but they're in a, now a commercial operation, has been very successful. So, to your point, it does happen, um, so, um, that's possible.
There are some things though, that I, I wanna make sure that we would prevent. And, and that is, um, someone from trying to, I agree that the intent, and in talking with this woman today, and I hear what Allison's saying, the intent was to allow producers, and if you read all the, the, um, you know, the reasons why everyone is talking about this in their ordinance, and it talks about small farms and, you know, the local, local farmers, but the reality is, is it fall, it, it covers anyone, and I can, um, you know, we wanna make sure there aren't some loopholes, and I think there are some loopholes, um, that, that we should make sure we tighten up.
Just, I have to ask, have there been any downsides to it since the law passed? Any problems?
Not that I have heard, um, I mean, I did ask her the question today about like, what happens if there's a foodborne illness? And what's the process? And she had a very good response, and the CDC gets involved, just like they do. And the CDC does what they do, um, based on where they purchase their food from, so, um, I don't, you know, I don't-
And the town is, by passing the ordinance, we're also like exempted from, we don't have any liability for that.
That's correct, just the person does, just the person's making the food. Is that the end of your list at the moment?
No, one small one that I think is a tweak that we can do fairly easily. And this is something I mentioned previously, um, that I think is important, and this is for farmers. In our zoning, in our, um, site plan review process, what requires site plan? Let me find it. There is a provision that says, hold on, sorry.
Oh, is this the greenhouses?
Yeah, it could apply to that. Hold on, I need tabs.
Know the feeling.
There's a provision, most communities don't regulate agriculture, um, like farm activities from planning board, with planning board approval. That said, our ordinance says what's exempt is agriculture, let me get, just let me get there. At the very end of what, section one in site plan review, on what requires site plan review, it says this section does not apply to agricultural land management act practices and forest management practices. I would like to change, that does not apply to agricultural practices, um, or just agriculture.
So, your cow barn is good to go with no site plan?
You still have all your development standards, you still have your performance standards, you still have all your setback requirements, but to make someone go to the planning board, it's a thousand square feet of non-residential. So, if, if a farmer wants to put up a thousand square foot greenhouse, he's gotta go to the planning board for site plan approval. That's just crazy.
That's why I argued to bring the fees down, but then you're also exempting them if they wanna build a massive chicken barn.
That's true, I mean, we could say agriculture, I could change that to say agricultural practice, um, limit to a certain size or exempt, I could do that.
Foundation or something, or?
Yeah, I, a thousand square feet's just so small to me.
Well, then why don't, we should probably change that for everything too.
Well, I'm not sure, everything, thousand is generally what people do site, communities do site plan review for.
Above a thousand.
Is a thousand, but agriculture generally, communities don't regulate it.
Yeah, but we have such a hard time defining agriculture.
Have a good definition of agriculture.
The other day, it wasn't so, it was a little-
So, are you proposing an ordinance change?
It doesn't have to happen right now, it's just something that I thought would be an easy one, it's on the list, um, and it doesn't have to happen right now. And it doesn't have to happen right now.
I thought we were trying to do this mostly just for like the simple greenhouse situation that not...
Well, right, I'm, right now, I'm calling something agricultural land management practices a greenhouse.
Right.
Just so you know.
I, you're saying that...
It falls within that.
Oh.
Yeah, it would.
I was going to say, you know, that's...
It's up to interpretation.
How you want to go farther and...
Well, I just want to, I wanted to clarify that and just legitimize that opinion, but I think we're good. I will say, that's the end of ordinances, but what is important is what has not been addressed.
I agree.
What I have not done. When you said 95% of my time was working on this.
Please.
Tannery, RFP and the cleanup, I haven't hardly spent any time on that.
Right.
Sagamore Farm, haven't hardly spent any time on that.
Right.
Maine DOT, I'm going to be the locally administered person that is managing the local administered projects, which isn't a bad thing, that's a good thing, but that's going to, I have to do that. Public Landing is me, I'm working with, we're working on that with the downtown team and with, we did, the state did issue a grant to, it's probably issued already, they probably awarded it, to assess in municipal infrastructure, Camden is being assessed, our public landing is being assessed by the state. And fiber and broadband, I haven't done anything on that really. Housing issues, affordable price housing, density infill, that's a big topic that I think we ought to look at and that's planning board and that is not ordinance at this point anywhere near that, but that's, this is going to take time. Short-term rentals, that's, a lot of people have been talking about that. I, I don't know if, and there are a lot of people concerned about it, it's not way up on my priority list, but you guys give me direction on things, so. And then DEP has a grant round open right now for stream crossings, I'd like to get moving on doing a stream crossing grant.
Not yet, but...
No, but it will be. I will say, I don't know if anyone, if y'all heard, but we did get awarded the $90, $95,000 to replace the culvert at the Snowball, which is fantastic.
And the road, it's to do the road too, right, or they're matching us for the road.
Yeah, I have to, I did ask them for, to touch base with them, so I'm actually going to go to Augusta on Friday to meet with them, because this was one that their grant hole program had, we're way beyond the timeframe. They called us and said, you guys didn't get this the last two times you applied, but we've got money for you for this, to replace that culvert and so we'll get a good, clean, open bottom stream culvert to allow aquatic insects and fish to traverse up Hosmer Palm Brook, which is great. And that culvert's ready to collapse, so it's good. No time like the present for that.
Good, Mark.
I was just going to say, there was a really good CDEC meeting yesterday where you brought up a number of the things that you haven't covered yet. And there's some good progress going to start on some of those things, I believe.
Well, I guess I would like to qualify that with, they can only start if other things fall off the list.
I agree. I was going to summarize it because Jeremy, this kind of morphed into, this agenda, I'm kind of morphed into a, originally we were discussing one, I think, one item and I think we recommend that we open it up to a total discussion, because, you know, they're just getting the very tip, the public's getting the very tip of the iceberg at what's been happening in our, my comment about victim of our own success. We have a wonderful resource that you've brought on board and I think it is, one of your challenges to help us understand how we balance the ordinance development and the other long list, oh, I'm sorry people, the long list of other items that we have to spend time on, the tannery, blah, 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 the list you just made, they're all important and 95% of your time, at least from my perspective, on ordinance only is not correct. We inadvertently backed ourselves in this corner.
We did.
All of this is very important. I totally agree with that, but we have to balance it and that can, logically winds up in your helping us to prioritize, what can we, what do we have to, you know, schedule differently perhaps to allow some of Jeremy's valuable time to be spent on these other initiatives? That's absolutely important because we're just trying to dictate where the ship is going and where it's going right now is too much time on ordinance development, period.
And not everything can be just workshopped through this massive process over and over again until everybody's happy sometimes. Jeremy gets a lot done just working on his own with some input.
Without interference from us included. No, we understand all that, but I think this is very, we've discussed this and we're going to take a look at what other approaches might work that kind of helps spread this load a little bit. It's everything from utilizing committees to our internal resources, we're not adding resources to the town to do these things, we could do that, but that's going to be a hell of a taxi, we're not doing that. At least I don't recommend it, the rest of them can, but I don't. And I think we need to take a look at execution, how we're doing it, because the processes, I mean, good news about town management, former government, is there are lots of checks and balances and not the least of which is the voters approve in the end of the day. But getting there, we're talking months of significant hours for each and every element you discussed and then the ones that are falling in the crack are being delayed. That, that's not where we want it.
I know, I just think we need to be more ruthless with prioritization.
Absolutely do. And it's not going to, but I hope people will begin to ask questions to us about why we're deferring, if we defer, why we're deferring anything to November or beyond or other avenues, because this is, this doesn't work. This just, this takes away the whole intent of bringing on a planning and economic development person. It's been wonderful for you almost one year, congratulations, but on the other hand, we, all of us collectively inadvertently have gone in the wrong direction, a little bit. And we need to bring it back and it's going to be some...
I mean, I wouldn't say the wrong direction, I would just say...
Yeah, you're right, it's not wrong direction.
I'd just say, you know, we've had a year of trying to figure out how this is going to work and I think it's been, you know, weighted very heavily towards ordinance development and I think after kind of reflecting on that, we all recognize that we don't want 95% of our planning and development director's time doing ordinance development.
Well clarified.
And having to talk about, I watched him, it's like he's having, having the same conversations over and over again.
Oh, yeah.
It's like talk about it with the planning board and then debrief with like, try to bring the select board up to speed with what the planning board just said and back and I mean it.
Yep, so bottom line...
Well, I do think having, and how I started about having some, maybe some work sessions with you all would be very helpful. And I think that's a good way of prioritizing these things and it's a good way that we can discuss this stuff. And again, it's been a year, so I think I have a good feeling for how I can approach time differently and some of this stuff differently with your help.
I'd agree and that's what we talked about today, we're going to have to look at probably next week, some methodology, work session, whatever it may be, that will help make it a little bit more balanced, let me call that, just balanced. So with that, I mean, this is a great discussion because I really think it's important to get this whole message...
And I see you guys as the policy people.
Yep.
Frankly, and not all of the committees.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, I mean, the committees do great work here and they're very valuable, but I think, and I'm just being honest, I think you need to be, direct that policy a little more.
I would agree.
I'm just throwing it out there.
When it comes to committees, I think that where they can be helpful is when you have a very discreet, specific thing you want them to work on. Because I think it's kind of moved over, you know, over a 20-year period to kind of like very general, okay, the committee work on this. And it just isn't always, it's not specific and it isn't always effective because you have this dynamic that Jeremy's talking about where an issue goes to the committee and then somebody has to relay it back to the select board and the select board, you know, it's just that back and forth that I don't think would happen if it was a very specific, discreet ask of them.
With Mark and Taylor.
I think, I think there is some confusion, some of the committees, that they are in charge of doing things instead of advising.
I think that's a good point.
I think that's something we need to...
I think that's a great point, a great, great way to put it.
Yeah, and then there's nothing, you know, God bless them for their energy, but on the other hand, they work at the behest of the town, select board, and I agree, we, I think we failed them in not giving them a specific direction or what we expect on whatever the program issue is, that maybe, they may be working on part of it or all of it, that's what we haven't done.
Yeah, and I think the work plan, which seems like this is the first year that a work plan was done for them, it seems like, I think that was a great start.
I think it was a step in the right direction, but it's not, and that's good, but it wasn't the be all and end all because I'm still seeing...
And again, it was too general, you know?
It was way too general, way too general. And then it, because of past practices, as Marcus, I think you suggested, they've gone on and done things that they considered from their perspective important for the town and that's, we'll help tweak that.
There was a time when the only way to get anything done in this town was for, well, I don't, I don't want to, was for committees to really, really, really advocate and kind of do the work themselves.
That's true.
And I think we marketized that and watched that.
That's true.
A lot.
That's true.
And I think then we were all enthusiastic like, yeah, no, we can do all those things you want to do, we can do all of them and then you realize, oh, well, there are still finite resources even though...
And I've had many committee chairs I've spoken to say to me, and I've heard it before many times when I was a committee chair, they would work, 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 work hard and bring it to the select board and it'd get, get squashed. And that's not their fault, it's the fault of the process.